Are there any additions to the agenda?
Administration has no additions today. Thanks.
Thank you. Could I get a member of council to adopt the agenda as presented? Deputy Mayor McGee, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Are there any corrections or amendments to the May 4, 2022 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes? No, it looks good. Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the May 4, 2022 Regular Meeting of Council? Counselor Clark, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving along to our proclamations. We have quite a few proclamations this morning. I will start with the first proclamation, which is Pride Month. I just have to find it here. Our agendas are a little bit different here, so... So our very first proclamation is Pride Month, which is June 2022, whereas the spirit of inclusion, equity, and human rights are pillars of our community; and whereas June is recognized as Pride Month in Canada and around the world as an opportunity to celebrate sexual diversity, promote equal rights, and build awareness of the challenges faced by the LGBTQ2S+ community; and whereas Pride Month is an opportunity to prevent discrimination and promote acceptance and inclusion of all, and to support the development of harmonious and respectful relationships amongst all members of our community; and whereas the Town of Drayton Valley celebrates the diversity of our gender and sexual minority communities and expresses a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion in our organization and our community; and whereas we should take pride in our identities and never feel we must hide who we are at work, school, or within our families and communities; and whereas during Pride Month, we can reflect on the progress made to recognize and protect the rights of LGBTQ2S+ communities and the work that still needs to be done. Now therefore, I Nancy Dodds, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as Pride Month in the Town of Drayton Valley dated at the Town of Drayton Valley this day, the 25th of May. Moving on to our second proclamation, which is National Indigenous History Month, June 2022, whereas the Town of Drayton Valley acknowledges and pays tribute to the traditional territories of the Peoples of Treaty VI; and whereas National Indigenous History Month is an opportunity for citizens to learn more about the history of the Indigenous Peoples in Canada; and whereas National Indigenous History Month celebrates the rich culture, heritage, and achievements of Indigenous nations across Canada; and whereas the Town of Drayton Valley recognizes the interconnectedness of the past, present, and future as foundational to the success, prosperity, and sustainability of our town and region; and whereas Indigenous Peoples have made and continue to make invaluable contributions to Drayton Valley, to Alberta, to Canada, and around the world. We, in turn, celebrate these contributions, respecting and supporting diversity and inclusiveness as a core value in our community; and whereas it is also a time to focus on truth and reconciliation in order to restore peace, harmony, balance, and to honor Canada's Indigenous people while working to restore our relationships; and whereas the Town of Drayton Valley is committed to working with Indigenous communities to achieve reconciliation in order to restore Indigenous Peoples' rights to self-determination. Now therefore, I Nancy Dodds, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as National Indigenous History Month in the Town of Drayton Valley dated this day, the 25th of May, 2022. Moving along to our third proclamation. Is Seniors Week, June 6 to the 12th, 2022. Whereas senior citizens have made and continue to make many contributions that strengthen our community, town, and province, seniors are a vital part of our families; and by giving generously of their wisdom and experience, they enrich our daily lives; and whereas many seniors are independent and active, and by challenging the stereotypes of aging, they are leading the way for future seniors; and whereas a more positive attitude toward aging is creating new opportunities for seniors; and whereas by highlighting awareness of senior citizens, their achievements, values, and contributions will continue to be recognized and celebrated. Now therefore, I Nancy Dodds, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim June 6 to the 12th of 2022 Seniors Week in the Town of Drayton Valley dated this day of the 25th of May, 2022. And our last proclamation for the day is National Public Service Week, which is June 12 to the 18th, 2022. Whereas National Public Service Week was created in 1992, following the passage of the National Public Service Week, Serving Canadians Better Acts. Its objective is to recognize the value of the services rendered by public service employees and to acknowledge the contribution of public service employees to administration. Whereas National Public Service Week was designed to promote pride and recognition at the public service of Canada by providing internal recognition and by raising Canadians' awareness of the excellence of the public service. Whereas, in accordance with the Act, every year throughout Canada, the third week of the month of June is known as National Public Service Week, with the week ending on the third Saturday of the month and beginning the previous Sunday. Now therefore, I Nancy Dodds, Mayor of the Town of Drayton Valley, do hereby proclaim the week of June 12 to the 18th, 2022 as National Public Service Week in the Town of Drayton Valley dated this 25th day of May, 2022. And that wraps up our four proclamations for this morning. I think that it's important that we continue to recognize and to learn more about the proclamations now that they're proclaimed, not only the days that we proclaim them, but on every day. I think that we need to celebrate diversity, history, culture, service, and residents in and around our community. Counselor Ballas?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make a comment. I just noticed that many groups get at least a month. Seniors get a week. I protest.
Well, we'll add that to the agenda for next year. Maybe we'll extend that. Extend that a few more weeks. Yeah, or maybe we'll just give you, yeah, your own, your own week. Bill Ballas Week. So we're moving into our Community Spotlight 6.1. We have Dana Sharp McLean here, and we'd like to welcome her down to give her a certificate of recognition and recognize you for all the hard work and dedication that you've done to our community. We're very excited to have you here today, and we want to say a big, huge thank you on behalf of the Town of Drayton Valley and all of council for your 24 years, if I'm correct, of service, 25 years of service in the community. I think that you've been doing this for 35 years, and then, and then 34 years, and then 25 in Drayton Valley. So thank you very much. And maybe if you can come on down, we'll get a picture with all of council and we'll give you the certificate. Read to you, or Rob, are you going to take a picture? So nice to be recognizing people in our community and all the years of service that they do. So we appreciate you coming down today. You're more than welcome to stick around and listen, or you can get out of here and start your renovating. Totally up to you. Okay, we are going to also move into our public hearings. Today, we have a non-statutory public hearing for Development Permit Application DV22-010. And Mr. White. So normally, I would just jump right into reading it, but I noticed, like I said, our agendas are a little bit different, so... Do you want me just to jump right into reading it? Or did you want to say anything prior?
I could summarize it. Your worship?
Sure, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, basically, this is a non-statutory public hearing for discretionary development permit for metal necks salvage yards. So it's here before you today because it's a discretionary use under the Heavy Industrial District. And administration hasn't received any comments or submissions regarding the proposed permit.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I will declare the public hearing open at 9:13 a.m. for Development Permit Application DV22-010. Those present today for the public hearing are myself, administration, council, and members of the community. So the purpose of the public hearing is to receive comments, concerns, and questions from the public regarding the proposed development at 5302 34th Avenue to utilize the subject property as a scrap metal recycling yard. Administration received a development permit application to utilize the parcel at 5302 34th Avenue as a scrap metal recycling yard. The parcel is zoned I-HVY Industrial Heavy District. Town Council recently gave second and third reading to a bylaw which rezoned 5302 34th Avenue from Industrial Light District to Industrial Heavy District. Additionally, the proposed operation will offer services such as farm and industrial site cleanups, roll-off bin rentals, oil field cleanup, dismantling and decommissioning, and provide a full-service scrapyard. The applicant also plans to offer residents in surrounding communities the opportunity to sell scrap metal to the applicant, depending on quantity, while also providing a convenient location to drop off unwanted scrap metal. Notification of the bylaw requesting comments from the public and advising them of the public hearing has been provided in accordance with the Town of Drayton Valley Bylaw 2018-07A. To facilitate the public hearing process, any comments received, written or verbal, will be presented as a package at the time of the public hearing. So I will call for comments from administration again. There are no submissions. Are there any comments from anybody, from anybody online? No, and are there any, and I will now call for comments from the floor. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed at 9:15 a.m. Deputy Mayor McGee?
The only point I might raise is that when I, two things are on my mind. Non-statutory public hearing, is that our normal writing of that? And non-statutory must mean something a little bit different. Secondly, is, I notice in that public hearing that we don't mention metal necks at all. We just mentioned an address. Is that common to you?
Through to Counsel McGee, yes, it is common to refer to addressing rather than ownership in development discussions. Secondly, the non-statutory public hearing is a, is a public hearing that's not required under the legislation of the Municipal Government Act, such as a public hearing would for redistricting. So council holds this public hearing to gain knowledge from the community as an extra function or opportunity for submissions. It's not required under the Act.
So just from the ask question, so non-statutory versus statutory, is there a difference?
Yes, statutory is the legal required under the Municipal Government Act. So if we had a redistricting here this morning, that would be called a, our other public hearing is called a statutory public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Perfect, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move into our delegations this morning. Our first delegation is Drayton Valley RCMP Stats Staff Sergeant Aaron Matthews. Good morning. Welcome. You're wonderful. How are you? Good.
So nice to see everybody again. I think I was just here. Not too long ago.
Well, it's always lovely to see you again.
It's always wonderful to be here. All right, enough of this, right? Okay, all right, fine. Yeah, so with regards to the statistics, again, if you take a look at the crime gauge, it covers from January until April. So it really isn't indicative of the actual April stats. Those can be found on page four. So in order to address those stats, we did see some slight, we saw some increases in, in the assaults that were reported to us, actual 100% from last year. Again, people are out and about. Bars are open, that type of thing. We have laid three charges in the assaults that were actually complaints that we received on assaults. With regards to the Town of Drayton Valley, we had 301 occurrences in April that were reported to us. We had 462 in total. So the majority of our responses are within the Town of Drayton Valley. Mischief, again, that, we've had an increase in the, what we consider to be mischief. What we've done is, instead of calling them just suspicious persons, you know, trying to check the car handles and that sort of thing on vehicles. So we've changed them to mischief because it's quite obvious these individuals have some intent in order to do something if it presents itself. So we have kind of changed the way things, we are scoring things. And so therefore, that creates that increase in those particular areas. With regards to the mental health calls, we do have a rural policing and crisis team now that has come out of, that comes out of Rocky Mountain House. It started, I believe, on February 23rd. And so we, we have been utilizing them quite a bit. We have had 46 calls since February 22nd, mental health-related. We have made 11 referrals, and the RPAK team has attended 14 times. So we're keeping them kind of busy, which is what we want, only because of the fact that we still want our own team here. We have, we ourselves have used the actual Form 10 and transported five to a facility, usually Pinoka. The nice thing about the RPAK team is it does follow up with the individuals as well afterwards to make sure that they're still on, you know, on their medication or whatever happens. So that is a nice thing with regards to, to that. Again, we are still actively trying to get our own RPAK team, considering the big increase in mental health calls that we have received. For April itself, we did have 10 calls, and we did transport one in specifically in April, so... Yeah, but the nice thing is, again, the RPAK team does come back, and they do follow up with the individuals that we are dealing with. So that's, that's nice. And they do have all the information that they need in order to continue following up with these individuals, so, yeah. And that is about it.
Well, thank you very much for that. Are there any questions? Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. Forty-six calls, that's, that's dramatic, in my opinion. That's a lot of calls.
Yeah.
Fourteen responses. I guess my question would be, out of those 46 calls, how many times were they non-responsive? And how long does it take for them to attend to a call?
Well, it usually depends, they have to prioritize. And of course, when we send a referral in, they determine which ones that they have to go to immediately. But because it started at the end of February, it took a little bit of time for the detachment members to actually start utilizing them on a regular basis because we've never had it before. So, I mean, they were responding and doing the same thing that they've done over and over and over again without making any referrals. But now, we've kind of changed things so that everyone is aware of it, and we are making those referrals. With regards to the time, usually about an hour, hour and a half for them to come and see us. But I think we are one of their biggest customers, so they, they've been up here quite a bit.
Just to follow up, so they do come out of Rocky?
Yes.
So they don't necessarily attend the call with you? They, when do they, and where do they meet?
Sometimes, for the most part, those 14 that they have attended, that we've been there as well. And yes, they do attend with us.
So do you wait for them, or?
Sometimes, yeah, yeah.
Deputy Mayor McGee?
Good morning, Aaron. I have, I think, three questions. The first one is the, when we look at a 47% increase in other, I've forgotten what other actually means.
Other is, your other criminal code consists of your breaches. We've had a big increase in breaches of conditions. So that, and that is a good thing because we've been laying charges in those. So that's really, one was, it also covers offensive weapons. In that one, we did arrest some individuals that were responsible for a robbery. And we found three weapons on that, on one of the individuals. So we were able to charge them with those as well. So it's, it's those particular, it's usually the breaches of conditions that raise that other criminal code.
And breaches are a reflection of our system.
It is. Yes, yeah, our catch and release system, yeah. And they put them on conditions, and then they don't abide by them.
Right. And please don't breach anymore.
Doesn't work.
If you don't like the word.
No, no.
Okay, it's just, I know you struggle with it too. So the, the second piece was, have you noticed a change in our clients? And I don't have another word for it, but I, I see.
No, our, our clients.
A lot of more, it's more interesting people than I have for some time. And I don't know if it's spring, or, have you noticed that?
Yes, some of our clients have been let out of jail and are actively working in a non-productive manner in our area. But for the most part, it consists of the same individuals. I would, like, 10% of the calls that we receive are done by the same people. And again, we have a whole bunch that just recently got released, so... And those are the ones we're breaching.
Yeah, yeah, all right, so you, you see it, and I see it, and so, okay.
Some of them have changed their hairstyle, too. But we still know who they are.
We still know who they are, under the disguise, exactly.
And just following a little bit up on Counselor Ballas's point is that when you're, when you're meeting with Rocky Mountain House, RPAP, you're meeting, do you meet up at the hospital or in the station, or?
No, they meet at the actual.
At the site.
At the site, wherever the call's coming, yeah.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Deputy, Counselor Gomana?
Thank you. Just curious about, you know, we had COVID situation and, you know, how RCMP and court system worked, changed a bit. And now, is it going back to where it was two years ago? Or we are still struggling? And the, you know, I guess before, my, may go in for a couple of weeks, but, you know, during the COVID, you didn't even, that didn't even happen. Is it happening now, and maybe there's a little bit more?
Yeah, we've, our response really hasn't changed. It has maintained the same. I mean, we are frontline, so that response never really changed. The only changes that we have actually been done, or the real changes that have impacted anybody, like the citizens or the community, is the changes within our front office. And actually, we've managed to streamline the process an awful lot more because we had to with COVID. So therefore, we, you know, online criminal record checks, for instance, as opposed to everybody coming into the office. So we are being able to have fewer people actually attend the office. We have, you can online motor vehicle accidents. We can, we can, we've had to change so that a lot of the things are being done online, and there isn't quite as much of a backlog of people coming into the office, so... But for the boots on the ground, that's pretty much the same, so, yeah.
Okay. Again, I'm sorry to talk about the same thing as Bill and Tom, but about the RPAK. So you're mentioning that sometimes it might take hour, hour and a half. So prior to that, when, when there's a call, you probably responding faster than that. So wouldn't that be an issue there, or is it depending on case by case?
It's case by case, yeah. And it really does depend on what we're going to, and, you know... We just, I mean, we have to respond irregardless. And we do have some tools to assist with, with individuals having a mental health crisis. However, having them being able to show up is, is, I mean, it is definitely helpful to us because they have the information, they have the skills, they have the knowledge. So sometimes it takes an hour and a half, but you can usually sit down with someone for an hour and a half and chat.
Right. And if you have those resources here, it will help as well, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Good morning, Sergeant Matthews. So we had a meeting yesterday with TC Energy, and a lot of their folks left, I think it was mid-April, early May, sort of thing. But they said they're anticipating another 325 people coming back here by middle of June. So there's that for you. And then also, you know, when we were chatting with them, we said, you know, I guess from your perspective, do you think there was any material difference in, in crime in general when we had the extra 1,000 people in town? Or, or, because I guess what we said to them was, you know, we felt that things went quite well, considering the amount of people that were here, so...
Yeah, no, I mean, those types of crimes are really due to the consumption of alcohol at the, the bars and that sort of thing. So assaults, those types of things. But really not anything, no other areas are really impacted by it. It's, it's usually those. As I've said before, I mean, alcohol makes us brave, so... We tend to do things that we normally wouldn't, so...
Counselor Ballas?
Thank you. Two things. Number one, with the response team now, does that reduce the number of Form 10s that you have to issue and therefore reducing number trips to Pinoka or wherever?
I believe it will in the future. Like I said, because it was fairly new, we, you know, and, and there are those cases, as Counselor Gomana pointed to, that we have to respond, and we can't wait for that hour and a half for them to come. So depending on what they're doing or how the behavior they're exhibiting, we may have to just Form 10 them and, and take them. So it, you know, it's all dependent on, on how it's going, you know, what kind of a call we're receiving, so...
Secondly, criminal record checks you had mentioned, they're not available online any longer, is that correct?
The, we are going to, we're looking into getting a mailbox, which, when we actually do get it, which shouldn't be too long, but we're going to get a mailbox, and we'll give the, we'll ask the town to put it on their website with regards to an email address where they can come in, and we can send them the forms, and we can do everything. And so it will still remain online. The actual online criminal record checks that they had started before, I think within the RCMP, it is no longer available because the, I think the company that was doing it was having some issues. But we found that it really helped our volume of, of individuals attending the office, so we're going to continue with it.
So it's an internal program now?
Yes, it's going to be internal, yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Did you have another question? Nope, okay. Uh, just one last question. So, um, how are you or where are you at with, um, your own team here for the RPAC?
I was at, with my own team? Well, we're still working on it now. I have heard that in two years from now, I believe, they were looking at putting a second team in Rocky Mountain House. They've decided that they're going to put it in Drayton Valley, which is good.
Very good.
However, I don't want to wait two years, so. So therefore, uh, and that is one of the reasons why I have them utilizing it as much as they, you know, I'm constantly pushing it on them because we shouldn't be attending to these things without giving a referral to the RPAC team and having them either attend or attend later type thing. But, uh, I, I don't think we can wait two years. So we're still actively working on getting a team in Drayton Valley before then. The biggest holdup is, of course, um, money. Um, AHS would have to commit to providing that, uh, person within, in Drayton Valley. They would have to provide the monies for that, uh, mental health professional to be here. So I think that is the major holdup right now, uh, with all of them because from my understanding, there were some RPAC teams that were going to be being put into place this coming year and some of them are not going to go ahead because of the financial situation with, uh, AHS.
And is the subcommittee still active, still?
Yes, yes, it is.
And do we, are you on that, Bill? Do we have still a representation?
I believe Bill is still on it. We haven't had one in probably the last month and a half, but, uh, we're planning on having one come in June, so.
Okay, so Bill can keep us apprised of whatever we need to push, where we need to put.
You're still our representative, aren't you? Yes, you are, okay.
You might just have to.
I've appointed you.
You might just have to remind him of the next meeting.
I will.
Well, thank you very much for coming this morning. We appreciate you always giving us an update and, and gracing us with your presence. So enjoy, enjoy the rest of your day and we'll see you again soon.
Yes, you guys, all take care and have a wonderful day.
Thank you, you too. We'll move on to eight point two, Pemena Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee. Ms. Patrick? Pat, Jeffries is here. So you can either sit or you can stand or wherever you would like to, wherever you feel more comfortable. Do you want to sit? Do you want to stand?
Good morning. That works just fine. That's better. See, I said technology was an issue. Okay, so we developed this vision and mission statement so that we would have a clear understanding of what the PPRC is all about. Basically, we summarized and said that we have six things that we want to be part of. We work on trying to have diverse membership. We want to have a, a good body of members that represent lots of different areas and, and age groups, et cetera, in town. We want to collaborate with other members of the community, AHS, people like you, as to what exactly is happening in terms of medical care in our community. Supporting the recruitment. This is a very important point because historically, way back when, twenty years ago or so, when PPRC was developed, it was a group of individuals in town who were facing a physician shortage issue. And they were able to actually go out and be part of a recruitment process. They were part of advertising, they were part of reaching out, um, traveling around to encourage doctors to come into town. They were the recruiters. That has changed dramatically in the last three or four years. And now, AHS is solely responsible for the recruitment part. We don't play any part at all in advertising or the recruiting of physicians to come to town. Our role has changed so that we are now focusing on the role of attraction. So, um, I sat in on a couple very good webinars last week. One was designed to explain to us how the process works. So my understanding, and of course, sometimes that's not a hundred percent, but I do my best. My understanding is that the first step is that there ha, AHS has to determine that there is a shortage in a community. They are the ones that make that decision. They make that decision based on, um, impact analysis, surveys, um, reaching out and, and, uh, hearing from other physicians in town as to whether or not there is a need. They have statistics. If anybody can figure out those statistics, you're going straight to heaven. It is unbelievable. You can get a stat to say whatever you want it to say. That's the one conclusion that I've made. So, um, they do gather stats to support where their decision is, though. So once AHS has, has agreed or made a decision that there is a shortage, then they, um, advertise the positions. Those positions are all advertised on a site called Jobs, Doctor Jobs Alberta, and we can all access it. I was even able to find it. And you can go through all the jobs that are listed in Alberta, and there are a million of them. So lesson number one, there is a high demand right now. If you are a doctor, you can find a job. Once that has been listed and advertised and there is the demand that is in a community, so right now in Drayton Valley, uh, AHS has agreed that we are in need of physicians. And at this point in time, uh, last week, we had one posted. I think they assured us there would be two. So there should be two posted on that site if anybody wants to check it out. Then applicants start to come in. AHS again is the one that does the shortlisting. And they form an interview committee from the community in AHS members and, and a couple of community members. Those community members are actually representatives from the clinics. And there is an interview process. Then, that's when our committee comes into play. Because once, uh, a person gets to a point of being shortlisted and interviewed and, you know, a, a good fit for a community, then they are invited into the community for a visit. And that's where our attraction role comes in. We, um, and I reached out last week and made a direct contact again with AHS to remind them because they haven't always been a hundred percent on it. But they are supposed to let us know that this is happening so that we can arrange for, um, whatever's required. Like, we tour them around, we wine and dine them, we introduce them to schools, if that's a need that's going to be there. We really try to show this is a fabulous place to settle in and live. So we put quite a bit of time, effort, and a few dollars in that direction. Okay, so then hopefully, and two years ago, we actually successful. We have, we did get two new doctors into town after going through all of that process. And so since that time, with those two new physicians, for example, we reach out to them regularly, we check on them, we make sure that their needs are still being met. We, uh, presented them with a, a nice little, um, token on their first anniversary of practicing in Drayton Valley, that type of thing. So we're trying really hard to make sure that they actually stay, which is part of our retention role. Part of our retention role in the past has also been, um, we'd offer, we'd put on a, a nice big dinner thing where we'd invite medical people from the community and, um, and celebrate. However, the last couple of years, we couldn't do that. So this past year, we identified several different medical groups in town and we actually physically went and gave them everything from, you know, cookies to all kinds of things to say thank you. So we tried to show it that way. So that's kind of what we've been doing. Another point on our mission statement, besides the attraction and retention. So those are the two big roles that we have. Um, a couple of years ago, it was brought to our attention that there was going to be a shortage of physicians in town because there were a significant number that were planning retirement. We tried, we kind of danced around for a while. We made some kind of effort, but I, I believe not enough, to try to be proactive with AHS and try to let them know that this was going to happen. Could we not start moving in a direction earlier rather than later to recruit some physicians so that we would not have a point in time when there was a shortage in town? Uh, we were not successful. Once the retirement letters were formally presented to AHS about a month ago, AHS started to pay attention. And, um, so that's, that's kind of where it got to. Where right now, there are, uh, two, three, four physicians leaving before the end of July. And AHS has posted, and again, I'm going to say the number two, um, but we need to verify that. They also suggested they, they may consider more, but I would hold on to as a, as where they, we have to hope they get to. So they're just posting the positions. The reality of physician recruitment is that it takes a very long time. If, uh, there are international graduates that apply for the position, it is a solid six to eight months before they can practice. And that's from the date that they sign a contract. So just the ordinary process of everything, at the very best case scenario where there's interest expressed right away, we can move right away, we'll be very incredibly fortunate to have people in, in filling those positions immediately when these other ones leave. I honestly cannot see that happening. So we are going to go through a few months here of some, um, different kind of a situation with, um, approaching a doctor. So as a result of the fact that a shortage was about to happen, our PPRC formed what we called a subcommittee, and we call ourselves the Healthcare Action Committee, consisting primarily of members of our group. We have Bill with us as a, he's on our committee as a representative from the town. Uh, he's on PPRC as a representative of the town. He is on the Health Action Committee. We have a county representative, we have a representative from Breton Town Council. And we invited Mark Smith, MLA, to join us. And then we have two other community members, I call members at large. One is myself and one is Amala. So we form a committee of about, um, five of us, six of us. And our purpose was solely to try to make a connection with AHS and try to, um, you know, have that, that conversation, et cetera, that would be necessary in order to try to get things moving ahead. We also thought that, um, in doing that, we wanted it to be a positive relationship, you know, something that they wanted to talk to us, they wanted our input. I don't know what I touched. I'm okay, all right. Um, and we also though, uh, when we sat down and met, we realized we need, needed to become educated. There was lots we didn't know. We didn't know how AHS really worked. We didn't, uh, we didn't have contacts right at the hospital, for example. There were many, many things that we needed to learn about. So we did reach out and, and strive to do that. And that we would try, again, to work proactively as a community. We wanted it to be something where we would be a representative that would be listened to by AHS of, of the community of Drayton Valley, Breton, Brazu County, all of the groups together. So, um, that's what we've been doing. Where are we at this moment? Uh, well, I got another phone call from the press. I said this time that we need to be encouraged, that we've made some headway, that AHS has posted a position or two. So that means that there is a movement in that direction. To be honest, at one point, three or four months ago, we were getting a message that, no, we're okay, we probably won't be needing to recruit. But I think once we reached the magic number of four leaving in a relatively short period of time, that's when everybody stepped forward. And, um, and so now we are at least moving in a more positive direction than we were prior to that. So it's kind of where we're at. Uh, we would like to be able to continue to have a voice, but in order to do that, we need to know that everybody is on the same page. And that means all of you, as well as I met with the county council. Uh, we need to be on the same page as to what the need is and what our demand is. Otherwise, we're wasting our time. So I'm open to questions.
Well, thank you very much for that. Any questions? Deputy Mayor McGee?
Pat, so nice to see you.
Well.
Pat, I, uh, there are things that, that you've talked about that have been very helpful this morning. Um, you started off with confusion on the roles. And, and I would say that we got confused as well. And so the question I, I'm thinking about right now is, as a, as a local government, what is our role? And, and then, because it, sometimes you'll hear the word, "We're in a crisis, you gotta act." And then we start down the road and, and it might all be, all be carried on as it should without us getting involved. Because once you get involved, you start to, you know, send it down some other rabbit hole, right? Do you have any advice on that?
You want me to advise you?
Stay at it or get at us.
Well, and I guess, Tom, that kind of addresses exactly what I've been confused about too and wondering about. In fact, I met with, uh, Mark one day. I said, you know, I don't see any point because it seems like everybody is doing it on their own. So, um, I think that, and again, I think we all know the value of having one voice and the same voice. And there are, everybody has one. And the more people that speak up about matters, et cetera, sometimes that can be a good thing. The problem starts to happen when that message isn't conveyed the same. So then, you're right, then whoever you're talking to can steer down the direction that they would like to. So, um, you know, we, we can continue to do the work that we're doing as, because of our Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee role. We can start speaking on, we can continue to speak on behalf of that particular group of people. However, um, then if AHS is getting different messages from different people in the community, then it's a waste of time. So that's kind of where I would like to know that we're on the same page, that there is a need, that we are very concerned about the physician shortage right now in town. There are two or three other matters that we've addressed here as a subcommittee. One was the Cancer Care Clinic. We raised big flags there. And again, have we been successful? Well, we were assured, uh, last week when we sat in with, um, the webinar that, um, that you had. I heard them say it was opening again this week. It is certainly not the same care that was prior to that. But again, from a positive point of view, at least there's something happening. Um, but are we finished with it? Personally, I say no. I, you know, if we just sit back now and say, okay, it's taken care of, I'm, I'm not convinced that that's the right thing to do. Are we happy that they're providing virtual care? Are we happy that they're reducing the number of hours that they are providing the, the service? I would say no. So we need to continue working on that one. Another one that's come big time to our attention. Another one that's come big time to our attention and it's huge. It's actually almost pushed the physician thing aside, um, is what's happening at the hospital right now. The fact that there is, uh, if I'm remembering the stat, 50% fewer nurses, sir, um, working there right now. The need to close, is it 12 acute care beds out of 36? Like a third of them? Uh, hey, we have got to wake up because, um, the comment that we don't need to worry, they'll transport patients to another community. They will be taken care of in my world is not enough. Not if you're an 80-year-old whose partner is just needing to go into a hospital and that position or that person is sent off to with a task one. Um, we need to continue to speak up and start to make noise. And, um, is that something that we want to be part of as a subcommittee doing this work? Is this something we're going to ask town council to take care of? Like who's going to be responsible for making all the noise and continuing to do that? That's the question.
And, and I think that's where I was going is that sometimes if we're one voice, the, the group that, that set up physician, physician recruitment, that's, that's a voice. Then we have the other, the, the side committee. Um, and if, but if we steer it all into one and, and are united, that's the committee. Because as you aware, the press all of a sudden saw and then started to ask everybody something.
Right.
Well. You know where that goes.
Absolutely.
But no.
They didn't even get my story straight to begin with.
So steer it.
But I know that too. And just a comment about that. So the press did interview me. There were two significant mistakes in the article. I phoned her right away. She did do a correction the next week that was very well done. So again, there's a relationship that needs to be developed. And if we have that happening, then we can continue to move it. The other part is that we need to, though, everybody needs to know. We need to talk to each other. We need to know what's going on.
Be clear on the, on the, on.
Absolutely.
Sometimes the points can be this wide, but narrow on what we can do. The other thing that I'm, I'm always seem to be concerned a little bit with is the communication between the clinics. Can we facilitate any of that? We've, and, and is it our, is it us that does that? Who does that?
Okay, so that definitely was one of the reasons we had to dance around for a couple of years. Um, we made an effort in, uh, as a committee. We tried to set up appointments with each clinic to talk about what they could see. And that was at the beginning when we weren't even certain about, uh, the retirement letters, et cetera, coming in. Um, one clinic did not want to be part of the process at all. The other one did have an interview with us. That's, uh, one of the places we heard where things seemed to be going okay. Um, so yes, we can't, um, we've, we cannot focus on that. I think Tom is the way to look at it. We have to look at it from the big picture scenario. And, um, so with physicians leaving town, I think we all know, I mean, those people in town who have no health needs at this point in time, whose family doctor is not leaving, um, there's nothing big going on in their world. They're probably just fine. It's those people whose family doctors are leaving, those people that are facing medical crisis right now, that are the ones that, um, will pay attention right now for sure.
And so lastly, um, I think about, uh, David Thompson sent out a note to us.
Yes.
To have, to find somebody that might want to sit on their advisory board. And I thought, good golly, we should have somebody do that. And what we couldn't decide is that elected official or is it an administrative position? Or is it coming from, uh, the group that, uh, that, that you belong to? Um, any advice on that?
It's a good question. I got that same email and I just kind of stored it. I don't know what to do with that either. Um, I don't think that's a new thing. I think, have you not? There's always been a representative from somewhere local on that board. I don't even know who it is right now. So that's, that's part of, part of a frustration. Um, like we can be part of a subcommittee or PPRC or whomever and not be known. And so then are we accomplishing anything? So that's something definitely to have a look at. What exactly is that David Thompson group responsible for? Do they have a connection with AHS that could make a difference? If that, the answer to that is yes, then absolutely. There should be somebody that's taking on that role. But it needs to be somebody that will maintain a connection with the other groups.
Counselor Ballas, do you have a question?
Thank you. First of all, Pat, I want to thank you for your strong advocacy and your leadership. Uh, it, it's really welcomed and, uh, really needed in our community. The, uh, on sitting on the committee, the subcommittee and, and is kind of in a dilemma when it comes to doctors because you can't interfere into private practice. The only place we can really advocate is with the hospital. So there's a fine line to kind of be drawn there. And, and sometimes that creates problems. And I think that's where it's really important that we have that one voice. So those things can be understood. And, and that's what we advocate for. Uh, and I, I thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. And that's, that's exactly the point, Bill. We, we cannot be, um, suggesting that we are here on behalf of a clinic. No, we're in, on behalf of all of the doctors. And as Bill is referring to, definitely the hospital. And like I said, that's what's kind of nudged everything else aside is that we all need to be worried about that.
Counselor Comana?
Thank you. Um, no, I agree, um, Bill's comments, you know. I thank you for your leadership and staying another, you know, as a leader. Um, also, um, it's great to see a volunteer-driven organization like PPRRC, uh, what they've done over the years, you know? And, and I echo the, the importance of one voice because PPRRC has been on the thick of, uh, and thin of things happening for the last six, seven years. You know, the, the gradual, um, issues that, that came across, uh, deterioration, um, and how, how much the committee has advocated for the last couple of years, as you mentioned. Um, so I, I think the, the history and all of that is behind the committee itself. Uh, because of that, I think, um, as a community, um, in my opinion, we need to support the committee to, to be that voice. Um, also there's representatives from the town and the county sitting there as well. Uh, but you know, now we are here. We have a issue, uh, we've, uh, the, the committee has been advocating, but you know, there's some headway. There hasn't been much headway. Uh, but what, what would be our next step? I know you don't work for AHS, but, but you know, where, where, where are we going from here, right?
Good question. I, I do have a couple of questions. And we're meeting as a subcommittee on Friday. There's a couple of things that have, uh, come to my attention. Uh, a question regarding, um, attraction of any applicants that do pay us a visit in the next short while. There's always been some, um, difference of opinion as to exactly what a community should offer to somebody that might be interested in coming to town. I know that way back when I first became part of the committee, we had physicians coming in, international graduates, um, the ones that have been here now for about five or six years. And we did, uh, provide a little bit more support in terms of helping, for example, to, uh, pay for a month's rent or help with, uh, reducing the cost of renting a car for a period of time or, uh, direct connections for getting cell phones set up, that kind of thing. Everything that had dollars attached to it. And that's when we were getting dollars from the town and from the county to help support that. Other communities were doing way more than that. They were providing tons of financial support to a doctor that said that they would practice in that community. We were at, we were told as a community, as a committee, that the big picture things, that was not a good idea to do that. That was a short-term attraction that was happening. Those physicians would do a contract and they'd be out of there as fast as they could. Um, so I've been doing a little bit of exploring on that. I've got a, a doc, daughter who happens to be a doctor. And, um, she told me, um, she's an obstetrician. She practiced in New Brunswick for five years. She told me, I didn't know this, that the reason that she took that job in New Brunswick, when it was offered to her, was that she was offered a $40,000 gift. And all she had to do was agree to stay for five years. If she left before that, she had to repay some of it. She stayed for five years and guess what she did? She left. So is that the answer? I'm not sure. And interestingly, I said, well, who paid that? Did the city pay it? Did the hospital pay it? No, they're, whatever they are called instead of AHS, that provincial group was doing that in order to lure physicians into the province. So, I mean, we could certainly, you know, is there any benefit to that in getting that kind of thing moving in a direction where we've at least got that five years? Then back when I hired teachers on a regular basis, I would never ask the question in interview, but I was always interested. Are they single? Can we find a man or a woman for that person? Preferably a farmer where they can't leave. You know, but at least then the, the retention part can really kick in and get to work. We want them to stay. And, um, so those are some things that we need to have more conversation about.
I love the long-term thinking. I like how you're, you're strategizing and looking at ways that. Yeah, I think that's, that's exactly what I know. Just having conversations with the doctors is, you know, they're even talking about the ones that are going to be staying in the community for life now.
Yes.
They don't want to see the five years. They want to see the lifetime doctors.
And that's the really important.
Yeah. So how do we? So, I mean, I think we have to definitely start strategizing of ways that we can do, like whatever we can be doing to attracting. Like I don't know if the committee, um, once the doctors are here, do they give like a welcome package? Like maybe there's things that we can be including in the welcome package. Like we could be having a discussion around, um, free family fitness passes for the physician and their family for a year or something. Like just those little bonuses of things that we can also be, you know, helping you to attract for sure.
Those, that, exactly, Nat. See, if we can get them to connect, develop relationships with people in town, those are the kind of things that will keep them here.
Community, right? We have a new pool that's being built. So that's going to be attractive, right?
Absolutely.
So we have to, we definitely have to work on marketing the community and, and really celebrating and, and how we're going to deal with this. I think it's a lot bigger than Alberta Health Services. I think we need to seriously be advocating the province because those are the ones that Alberta Health Services answer to. So I think we need to push from the top. Um, it, when it comes to our hospital, we don't have a, um, facility director or a site supervisor and we haven't for years and that's a huge problem. And, you know, what I hear is it's the internal noise that's happening in the community, why those physicians aren't attracted, right? And we're not going to be able to change that. And we have to kind of just get over this and do the best we can. But I think we have to push for the province to say, we need somebody in these positions to help with that direction there because otherwise things are going to just keep falling off and falling off and not being, not being dealt with.
Good point. And that is one of the reasons why I think having a Mark Smith or whomever MLA, we're looking for somebody that has connections. They have the names of the people that we need to be talking to in order to do that. And, and so Mark's been able to do that so far. Um, I think another thing that we, um, are looking towards is an actual meeting with the Minister of Health as being a key role, uh, as to move forward. And I'm confident that that can happen. So, but yes, yeah, I agree. So yes, and I, yeah, we do the welcome package thing, but we need more than teacups in there. We need solid, like, phew, that's really cool. We get a whole year of free pool pass.
Yeah, a new swimming pool, right? So then, yeah, sell them on the community. Or maybe we get the, I don't know, canoe club involved or something adventure that really markets straighten, right? We got to get creative for sure. Counselor Ballas?
Yeah, I, I just want to make a comment. I, I think, you know, you can offer whatever you want, but AHS is right now is the person or the group that makes all the decisions. And, and I think they're the ones that really needs to be restructured and the red tape removed. Uh, and until really, I think a lot of pressure has to be put on the provincial government and our MLAs to consider looking at that. And maybe there is a plan in place. Uh, I hear Premier Kenny, as long as he's still there, is talking about some restructuring. So I'm, I'm hoping that that is the case because that really is a whole back there. They, they built a bureaucracy there and they're looking after themselves and forgetting about the communities. And I, I think that's really where we got to put the pressure.
Absolutely.
So where are we going? I guess one last point I'd like to make is that definitely our subcommittee can continue to do what we're doing. Um, but I think what I've also seen AHS do is they've approached the individual parts. And I would like to know that we are, um, at least saying to them as they approach that, yes, uh, we will talk to you, but we're going to invite so-and-so or, you know, do that kind of a routine where they'll start to see the picture that we're all one. And rather than individual meetings, um, they just need to hear that, sure, I can talk to you, but we're part of this. So that we are all on the same page.
Absolutely. Well, thank you very much for coming today. We appreciate your hard work and everything that you do. And I know that, um, you work very hard and, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll figure this out. We just have to, like you said, we have to come together, work together and make sure we're all heading in the same direction and, uh, do the best that we can do, right? There's certain areas where we're not going to be able to solve or fix. And I think we have to move away from those and, and look where we really want to put our attention and, and see some changes in our community for sure.
So yes, advice is always welcome. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Okay, I think before we move into our, um, business, uh, our decision items, I think we will call a, uh, 10-minute break at, uh, 10:08 AM. We will reconvene our meeting and we will move into our, uh, decision items. Just, I guess, before we jump in, was there any business arising from the delegations? Nope, doesn't look like there is. Okay, so then we'll move into 10.1, Amending Cemetery Bylaw, 2022-07E. Um, I believe this is Mr. Alonak? This is you? Okay, sorry, I just, it's a little bit confusing getting rid. We have a new agenda here or a new, uh, I guess, uh, what is this called that we're using now?
It's the iCompass.
Technology. We have new technology. So you have to have to bear with me today. The floor is all yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good morning, Counsel.
Good morning.
So today, administration is proposing to amend the current cemetery bylaw based on our growing community standards and complying with the amended Alberta Cemeteries Act and general regulations. So just in the essence of time, uh, if Counsel recalls last GMP, two issues were brought up. One was the, uh, basically, uh, a bylaw that would restrict unsupervised teenagers to visit the cemetery, of which administration struck that out. And also we removed the, the sex definition under the bylaw. Um, seeing as how really at the end of the day, it really doesn't pertain much to the town, um, even through the application form. So, uh, essentially what we did with the form is we just essentially made it optional because really to us it's a name, but to the family, it's, it's what they make of it. So that way it makes it as neutral and, uh, optional as the family sees fit. Uh, so saying to that, does, uh, it's presented to Counsel for a decision.
Perfect, thank you very much. Are there any questions for administration? Doesn't look like there's any questions. So Deputy Mayor McGee, do you have a question?
Um, thank you, Counselor McGee. So essentially the reason why it's structured like that is because it should be part of the perpetual care that the town should be doing the work to save the resident from doing it. So really, um, every year, every spring or incrementally, uh, administration would go there just to see what kind of landscaping upkeep there should be because we don't want to reflect that back on to the, the residents or the people that buy the plots. So if they just basically bring the concern up to us, we'll take it care, take care of it for them. So that's kind of why the verbiage is in there is we don't expect the residents to be doing their own grounds maintenance. No, no. Lots of people, uh, request that, you know, can we, if we buy a bench, can we put it down? If we buy permanent vases, can we keep them there? Up to which we always say yes. So it's just, uh, I guess, have a method of control so that someone's not building something massive, you know, on a plot or, you know, that sort of thing.
So would somebody need to then contact you if somebody wants to put a bench? Would they just phone the town and say, hey, we'd like to include a bench at, at a plot?
That's correct, and it has happened.
Oh.
And, uh, essentially, so Lisa's the cemetery administrator, so she'd just make a, you know, basically just give them permission, or if there's any sort of prep work, she would just make a work order for public works to just kind of get that area ready or, or whatever that looks like.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been done before.
And the infant means any person at least 29 days of age. 29 days is an interesting number. Is it a random number or?
It's, it's just what the legal definition of infant is from what, uh, when we did our research. Like I said, it's just, it's just definitions for the bylaws. It's just a differentiation. If you were to look at the old definitions of age, it would kind of blow your mind a bit, so.
So it really just means definition of, of infant. Then, and then as we, as we go further down, we, we then start talking about whether you need a, um, cement, uh, sorry.
Liner.
Liner, um, and you, you don't need a cement liner after five, but four and a half, you're okay. Is that another random number?
Well, it, it's just the definition from what we researched at different municipalities to try to get, yeah.
And I, I thought that eventually you get into the cut and paste, and that's, uh, so relax, Counselor McGee. Um, now, the other one I, I thought was interesting was leaseholders are not authorized to sell their plots. Um, they're, they're, they have to bring them back to the town, but then it goes into D, and it says leaseholders may transfer their plot or needs to another person with written permission from the town. Is there a particular reason why I wouldn't be able to sell my plot?
It, it's just so that it's more of a method of tracking, just so that people aren't, like, privately selling, privately selling, and then administration's trying to find out who the owner is. You know what I mean? Uh, transfer is a lot easier because the perpetual care is already paid for, but if it's for sale, you know, then the question arises, do we charge them for the perpetual care? Are we going to get refunded from the first person? Or at least a transfer, you know, the perpetual care is taken care of. It's just basically what the name is on the plot. Right? So it's just for ease of track.
Right. And so my guess is that over time, if you had a plot in downtown Edmonton, uh, that if you bought it for 200 bucks, it's now worth $2,000, right? So that, who, who makes that decision?
So it, um, it would be in the fee schedule, or it should be anyways. Um, and then, uh, so say if someone wants a refund, we would refund them what they paid back in the day and not current price, if that answers your question. And it's not $2,000 a plot, but you know.
No, no, but it will be in, 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 in some other cities and things like that. So it would seem to me that if I, if I purchased early and, and I did decide to sell it, I want to be able to do that and then take the profit.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're not, you're not inhibiting that.
No, 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 absolutely not. Actually, if I, I, I can just recall a quick situation where someone bought the plot about nine years ago, and they said, I've decided that I'm going to inter my loved ones somewhere else. Can I have a refund? So we looked back in the records for what they paid, and then we refunded them in full. So that way, nobody's feeling ripped off, so to speak.
Okay. And the last thing is, why did we include the Cemeteries Act, um, in, in this? What was, what was the intention of, of bringing the province of Alberta into this?
Uh, we just attached, our administration just attached it in case counsel wanted to make some sort of a, a reference or just kind of a quick read on, you know, what the new act is, because this bylaw is 25 years old, so we just wanted counsel to kind of have as most information as possible with this, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? And are we looking for all three motions, right?
Yes, please, Madam Mayor.
Okay, is there a member of council that'd like to give, uh, make a motion for first reading? Counselor Clark?
Yes, I move that counsel give first reading to the cemetery amending bylaw 2022-07-E as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any comments, questions, debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Uh, can I get a member of council to give, uh, make a motion for second reading? Uh, Council Sheriffs?
Um, I make a motion that council give second reading to the cemetery amending bylaw 2022-07-E as presented.
Thank you very much. Any comments, question, or debate on the motion? None, all in favor? That is carried. And can I get a member of council to give third, or make a motion for third? Oh, sorry, did you have a question? Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Ms. Rasmann?
Clarification, before we can move for third reading, we need a motion giving unanimous consent for third reading.
So the consideration?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, the consideration before. Uh, Deputy Mayor McGee? Thank you ver, thank you very much. Any comments, questions, debate on that? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. And can I get a third and final reading motion? Counselor Urbana?
Thank you. Uh, I would like to, uh, make a motion that council give third and final reading to the cemetery amending bylaw 2022-07-E as presented. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We have, uh, three readings on the table, and I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, and now we will be moving on to 10.2, Community Standards Bylaw 2022-06-P. Uh, Mr. Cody Rosing, can you come down, please? Oh, and Tom, we have Tom up here as well. Both of you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and counsel. So we're here this morning to present first reading of the new Community Standards Bylaw Uh, the purpose of this bylaw is to make it easier for our community to understand the rules and regulations that govern our community and make it easier to find items in our bylaws, um, by incorporating six bylaws into one. I've brought here this morning our community peace officer, Cody Rosing. Uh, he'll be here today to, uh, take counsel through all the changes and explain the bylaw. Uh, and, uh, so I'll leave it with him. If you have any questions, you can ask once we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and counsel. Um, so today, we would just like to bring the first reading of the Community Standards Bylaw, uh, proposed to you. Um, why we're doing this is upon reviewing our enforcement, um, bylaws pertaining to unsightly properties and community standards as a whole, um, there were inefficiencies that were discovered, uh, within those bylaws. Um, part of these inefficiencies, uh, make it very difficult for enforcement services to actually do, um, efficient and proper enforcement of the bylaws. A simple example of something like this is if we were to issue an order for an unsightly property, the only way we can actually serve the order is through registered mail. So I can't come knocking on your door and do a personal service. So just that delay in having to mail it now prolongs the whole process, um, involved in that. Um, in addition to that, there were numerous bylaws, um, that had similar information in the different bylaws. Um, they had different fine amounts for the, essentially the same offense. So then, are we charging under this bylaw for $100? Are we charging under this bylaw for 150 for doing the exact same thing? Um, in addition to that, we're trying to bring some more modernized wording and align with any recent changes with other legislation and case law. Um, and we're trying to consolidate, as Tom said, six into one, uh, standard, community standards bylaw. So it's the same people that's being affected as previously been affected in the same bylaws before, so it's members of the public, um, both businesses, residents, and visitors, um, and then obviously internal departments, um, being involved in the enforcement of the bylaws. So relevant provincial legislation is Municipal Government Act, the Agricultural Pest Act, the Weed Control Act, and the Safety Codes Act. The InSCO bylaws as part of the proposed Community Standards Bylaw is the current Community Standards Bylaw, the False Alarms Bylaw, the Firearms Control Bylaw, the Noise Bylaw, Parks and Public Facilities Bylaw, and the Temporary Shelter Bylaw. In creating this community, proposed Community Standards Bylaw, we completed a jurisdictional scan of other municipalities. Um, we both reviewed our own internal community standards bylaws, um, as well as various municipalities such as Edmonton, Fort Saskatchewan, Stony Plain, Morrenville, Slave Lake, uh, and Brazel County amongst others. Internally, while doing a review of this, we consulted with community services, protective services, infrastructure services, and planning and growth, uh, to try and get, um, good, good information from all internal departments on what works best, um, any challenges they've previously faced, um, with our current bylaws, and is there ways that we can address them in a new bylaw? So some high-level changes of this proposed Community Standards Bylaw is that we're bringing the numerous bylaws into one consolidated bylaw. It makes it easier for the public to find information they're looking for, as well as easier for information for administration, uh, when we're trying to, um, educate the public on our bylaws. Um, it's just one, one document they're going to, uh, for all kind of community standards related information. The spirit and intent of the individual bylaws have been maintained as much as possible in the creation of this proposed Community Standards Bylaw. In the current six, uh, bylaws, there's 71 pages. We're proposing it goes down to a total of 25, so it's a lot less reading, um, we're essentially getting the same information, um, in, into one bylaw kind of thing. We did a review of the fine amounts, and we're including the ability for permits to be issued for anything under the bylaw. So before, there's very limited things that you could actually be permitted, uh, get a permit to do kind of thing, where this allows that, for example, if someone wants to, um, have their grass more than six inches, they can apply for a permit kind of thing, and it's either going to approve, be approved or denied kind of thing, so. Uh, further changes is we're removing unnecessary definitions. We're amending and clarifying of other definitions. We're removing a third offense. So normally, you see in lots of bylaws, uh, when you're looking at the, the penalty schedule, you have a first offense, second offense, and third offense. Uh, we're proposing that we remove a third offense. So what happens after a second offense? Now we just go to an automatic court appearance. So then the sitting judge or the justice would then decide what is appropriate fine amount for that. Um, and lastly, we're, uh, removing the requirements that there needs to be, uh, conviction of an offense before allowing for the issuance of a second offense. So currently, how it's worded is I issue a ticket today for an unsightly property, and we're back there two months dealing with the same thing. I cannot issue a second offense fine amount until there's been a conviction on the first one. So for example, um, I'm not certain on what the court times are in Drayton Valley. Um, other locations I previously worked, we're looking at a year and a half before you're getting a trial. So by the time that happens, your first offense all day, every day, you don't get the option to go to a higher fine. When we get into actual community standards changes, um, we're amending and clarifying junk vehicles from an accumulation to one. Uh, you can still have more than one junk vehicle if it's in an enclosed structure. So if you have individuals that are car enthusiasts and they're working on vehicles, um, as long as it's in their garage or something similar to that, they can have five, for example, um, but only one is able to be out in the public, public view kind of thing. Uh, removing specific requirements for unoccupied buildings, as they should have the same, same standards for other properties. So for example, if you have a, a property that's unoccupied, they're still required to cut their grass, they're still required to make sure the structure's in, in good repair, stuff like that, so. Um, but it still allows them the ability to board it up to prevent unauthorized access, um, if they so choose. We're going to be introducing, introducing requirements, um, that place, for places that are deemed unfit for human habitation by Alberta Health Services, or that are deemed unsafe by a Safety Codes Officer. So from the date of being deemed unfit or unsafe, or from the passing of the bylaw, the property owners would either have two years to deem it fit, safe, or demolish the structure, um, to be in compliance with the bylaw. So this is a, it's not a common, um, section per se. Um, I've introduced this in another municipality. It worked really well on being able to, um, get some movement on those type of properties. For example, now, if Alberta Health Services comes in, deems property unfit for human habitation, that property can sit there for 20 years with no one living in it, and there's no follow-up that kind of proceeds with that. So this is starting to put some legislative backing behind on, now that your property is deemed unfit, you need to do something with it, so. Uh, just a quick change on the removal of graffiti that's placed on a property from 72 hours to just 72 hours weather permitting. So if it's going to rain for the next week, we're not going to tell you to go out there in the rain and try and paint it, and it's just going to wash off. Um, and we're moving the repairing of motor, uh, repairing of motor vehicle prohibitions. So currently, you're only allowed to repair a motor vehicle on a property if it's a business, or for personal, if you own the property and own the vehicle. So for example, if I own a property in Drayton Valley, and my brother comes over and we want to do an oil change, I can't do an oil change on his vehicle. So this just, um, removes that kind of ability, so people can do that, that kind of small maintenance on their vehicles. Um, other things that were covered under there, such as noise, odors, fluids, et cetera, that's covered under, uh, different sections of the bylaw or other legislation already, Uh, further on community standards related changes, we're going to be removing panhandling prohibitions. Um, my understanding is we historically haven't had any enforcement relating to this, um, in the community in the past. Um, in addition to that, it is, uh, specifically just targeting an individual or a specific population. So we're trying to remove, um, targeting specific, um, populations, and it's, it's a, this is made for, or this is made for, um, everyone in the community, not just specific pop, populations. Uh, we're proposing to remove waste management provisions, as it's covered under the Waste Management Bylaw, uh, introduction of recreation vehicles or similar that are located wholly on a whole, wholly on a hard surface area. So for example, uh, we're proposing that you can't have your camper just parked on your front lawn. So it needs to be in a driveway, uh, for example, if you are going to keep it on your Gravel still works. Um, we're including an offense for not complying with a cleanup order. So if we issue an order that you need to clean up your property, these are the five things you need to do. Um, you're going to have a compliance state to do that, and when that compliance state comes and goes, if you haven't cleaned up, we're then going to start our process. Um, but part of that is, here's your violation ticket for not complying with our order. So it's just furthering the incentive essentially for people to clean up their properties, um, because it's coming with a bigger hit with it kind of thing. Um, and we did include some exemptions of grass or other similar, similar vegetation to not exceed six inches in height. So currently, under Community Standards Bylaw, no property in the town of Drayton Valley is permitted to have any grass or similar vegetation in excess of six inches. However, when we look at our map, we're not just the town, we also have some agricultural areas that are within our boundaries. So we're proposing that there's different areas, um, such as this kind of canary yellow, this gray, all these kind of areas like this, where they're not required to cut their grass down to six inches. So it's just kind of making it a little bit, yes, it's obvious, I'm not going to go tell a farmer to, they have to cut their, their field to six inches, but let's make it so it's clear as day for the next person that, that comes along, right? So. Um, when we get to noise bylaw changes, um, currently, there's numerous specific sections. Um, so for example, there's a specific section for using your horn. It's just going to a generic, um, can't cause noise. So all of these general, there's like 10 different specific things you can't do that were specific fine amounts, now it's just a generic, uh, fence. Um, and then we're proposing that we amend the quiet hours that are currently in place from 10:00 p.m. till 7:00 a.m., and we're proposing they go to 11:00 p.m. till 7:00 a.m. So it gives that a, additional hour in the evenings. Um, pertaining to parks and public facilities changes, um, we're proposing that we remove the animal and livestock requirements, as some items are already addressed in the current communities, or, uh, animal control bylaw, and additional inclusions would be forthcoming in an amended, uh, animal control bylaw. We are proposing that the times at the close, the parks are closed, they're currently from 11:00 p.m. till 7:00 a.m. We're proposing they go to 11:00 p.m. till 5:00 a.m. So this now starts to allow for individuals, uh, before they go to work, take their dog out, go walking through the park without having to possibly be facing a fine or something similar to that nature. And we're proposing that we remove, remove specific bylaw offenses, um, and moving towards more of a, uh, fail-to-obey-a-directive sign. So on the side of the screen here, we have an example of what something like that might be. So currently, um, we would have different offenses such as no swimming in a stormwater pond, or no pets in the water. Those are going to be specific offenses under the bylaws, uh, where what we're proposing is we move to a directive sign type thing. So if we have emerging things, um, such as stormwater ponds, that was a big thing that started coming up about two, three years ago, where people, uh, for years and years and years, they've been using these stormwater ponds for hockey and different, uh, leisurely activities, and there's a big push through lots of municipalities to all of a sudden, well, we don't want that anymore. There's people that are falling through ice, um, different stuff like that. So historically, these municipalities haven't had anything in place, and they were kind of scrambling. So if something, a new emerging, emerging issue comes up, we can just change our signage, So if something, a new emerging emerging issue comes up, we can just change our signage and now we're covered um, under what a person can or can't do um within a facility or a park or something like that. Uh, when it comes to firearm control changes, it's essentially a complete removal of the bylaw and its contents. There's provisions in federal legislation that cover aspects contained in the bylaw such as no shooting in town limits. Um, primary contents of the firearm control bylaw are not calls that bylaw officers or peace officers would be responding to due to officer's safety concerns um with being unarmed. Um, however, there are some inclusions through the Parks and Public Facilities bylaws regarding projectiles um that the firearm control bylaw vaguely touched on. When we get to the temporary shelter, uh, this is definitely something we're seeking direction on. Um, through a review of the temporary shelter bylaw, administration identified concerns with the use wording, service level impacts and the enforceability of the bylaw and its current state. So administration met and further discussed the recent work being done regarding people experiencing homelessness and options moving forward in this regard. Part of that was discussions and some discussions um I'm bringing forward to council today is there were two rulings made by the B C Supreme Court, um, which have become case law. So that's, that's essentially legislation that's governing what's going on. These decisions are Victoria versus Adams and Abbotsford versus Shant. So a very high level overview of these two decisions is that local governments cannot enact an outright prohibition on overnight accommodations on public lands by people who are homeless. The charter grants a constitutional right to someone who finds themselves homeless, allowing them to erect a temporary shelter on public lands in order to sleep during the night. Bylaws that are in place must be reasonable in terms of their restrictiveness and the impact on homelessness. So what we currently have in the proposed community standards bylaw relating to temporary shelters is that no person shall place or use an overnight shelter except in a campground designated by the municipality, an area designated for overnight shelters by the municipality, an area designated as residential district if the overnight shelter is in the backyard or side yard, if the yard is fenced. And that only applies if it's no longer than seven uh consecutive days within a calendar year. No person, owner or occupant shall use or permit the use of an accessory building for human habitation or as a residence, such as a shed. And no person, owner or occupant shall use or permit the use of a recreational vehicle for human habitation or as a residence. Similar uh to above where that that applies for a period not longer than seven consecutive days. So you can't just put a camper um that would fit in the box of a truck on a piece of land and live in there for six months kind of thing. Unless you're in a campground, a designated area, um, kind of thing. So a couple of different options uh regarding the temporary shelter is to either just keep the temporary shelter bylaw as is in place and continue to enforce the bylaw under its current legislation or to rescind the temporary shelter bylaw and conduct no further enforcement relating to temporary shelters that do appear. So it's administration's recommendation that council proceed with current wording that is in the proposed bylaw. So that's the wording that I just discussed uh briefly before there. Um, if the proposed community standards bylaw receives three readings and becomes law, administration would then proceed with identifying the most suitable location on municipal property to allow for the use of temporary shelters on a more permanent, non-going basis. And it's very important to note that all of these options only provide an interim solution to address the immediate conditions and concerns of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness. So with that being said, um, does anyone have any questions or discussion?
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Counselor Clark?
Um, so we talk about uh overnight accommodations. The town has decided that we're going to invest in, you know, 14 rooms. Um, you know, so that that sort of brings a question in my head to the fact that for providing these, why do we need other locations, right? Um, and then secondly, I mean, Tom, you mentioned the other day that, you know, you had seen some folks with fires in the bushes and those sorts of things, right? Um, you know, that that does pose a risk to public health and safety, I think. And, you know, especially if they're in wooded areas, we can see it, you know, escalation pretty quickly of a of a forest fire sort of thing. So, um, you know, I guess my thought is, is if we're providing these accommodations, why do we need to allow for others um in locations that maybe are not the word is suitable or or uh, you know, as as good as those shelter pods, right?
Yeah, absolutely. So um, I'm definitely not as well versed as someone such as Lola or Emily would be on the homelessness uh situation in Drayton Valley. Um, however, it's my understanding that if those pod, the shelter pods, for example, are being used and individuals don't want to share with anyone, then we're only able to accommodate up to 14 people. If they are willing to share with someone else, we can accommodate up to a maximum of 28 in the shelter pods. Um, however, through my understanding, through discussions with other members of administration is that we quite possibly have more than uh 28 individuals within the community that uh would be eligible to use those shelter pods. So what we're proposing is another alternative um for them to go. And it would be a location that administration, um, possibly in consultation with council would determine on where this location is. So we can essentially try and make it as as safe um as possible um so that they're not just randomly in in the bushes somewhere on someone else's property, starting their fires, um, having Tom and his crew come out with fire trucks, having to extinguish that kind of stuff. So it's trying to give ano- another alternative um on the big picture of trying to um help, help solve the homelessness issue.
Mr. Osmond, did you want to follow up?
Uh, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that we, I provided some clarification to council. So um, the the goal here today is to get first reading of the bylaw to start an engagement process uh that will include council and the public uh to discuss these issues. Um, so although we certainly would like any feedback you'd like to provide today, uh, this is by far not your council's only opportunity to provide input. Um, I know that uh one of our committees, the Community Safety Committee is is talking about some of these issues as well. Um, so there'll be a continued engagement process as we move forward here.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. That helps. Uh, Counselor Damanah?
Thank you. Um, so regarding the committee uh standards and um you mentioned that, you know, we used to have first, second warning and then third warning and then escalate from there. Um, and also you mentioned about how much of a backlog that uh, you know, this this might uh already have and then, you know, might create. So um, is there an opportunity, you know, are we, are we giving out tickets and fines before we actually, you know, move on to a a more legal process? Um, is there opportunity for that? And um also, you know, I have another question about the H S piece, but if you could give me a little bit of information on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So um, when it comes to any enforcement kind of thing, um, the officers have discretion on whether we're proceeding with warnings, whether we're proceeding with tickets. Um, if there's multiple issues, whether there's some tickets, some warnings, whatever, um, the ultimate goal is to obtain compliance. It's not to just write tickets for absolutely anything and everything. That's just another uh tool in our toolbox on where we can proceed. Um, so if it's a repeat offender, for example, um, if we talked to him last month about cutting their grass and they took forever to do it, but they finally did, but now we're back the next month, still haven't ordered their grasses long again. Maybe it's time we proceed with a ticket on that instance kind of thing, right? So um, it's not meant as every unsightly property or anything like that that we're getting with. Hundred percent, we're writing a ticket first time. That's not what the intent is. The intent is ultimately to get the homeowners um with the unsightly properties um to clean up their properties kind of thing. Um, and ideally they do it without our involvement, but um any nudges that we need, we're trying to have those different tools available to us to get that done.
Okay. And and regarding the uh properties that H S has uh mentioned unfit, so um deemed condemned. Um, the there are, I I guess few in our community already. So what is the the procedure of, you know, you're mentioning about demolishing and all that? And so in my mind, how how do we address that and how do we get there, right?
Yeah, so under our current community standards bylaw, um, as I mentioned, we're, we definitely have challenges when it relates to um being able to deal with unsightly properties within the community. So that's why we're here today is to try and bring forward some solutions to those. Um, part of those solutions is clarifying what we can and can't do um when we issue orders and proceeding with that. So if we have a property that we issue an order to, for example, if they don't comply with the order, now we can start the process on hiring contractors to go and start cleaning up the property. Um, and then that bill gets uh put back to the homeowners, homeowners. Um, and if it's not paid, then that goes on their tax roll. So there is a process for all of that. Um, when it comes to unsightly leaves, it's it's not something that can be done overnight. They're they're lengthy, they're time consuming, there's a lot of work that goes involved in in them. Um, but if you have the proper backing, the proper bylaws in place that support um support it, then it can be done. So when it comes to the un- the unfit for human habitations, for example, like I said, currently right now, if Alberta Health Services came in in 2010 and deemed this address as being unfit for human habitation, it could still sit there for another 20 years from today and nothing's going to change. Now, what we're proposing in this one is once it has been deemed unfit for human habitation by Alberta Health Services or deemed unsafe by a safety codes officer, they have two years from the date of being on deemed unfit or unsafe to either have it deemed safe or fit or to demolish their property on their own. Um, if it's not done in that two-year period, then that's when we would proceed with um, what are we doing next? So that's when we would be looking at the removal or the demolition or different, different aspects like that as as permitted under the bylaw.
Okay.
Sorry, just to.
Oh, you know what? Can I go to Deputy, uh?
Oh, sure.
Deputy Mayor McGee, um, I just want, and I just want to remind everyone just to limit our questions today because we have a very extensive um agenda to get through. And there will be, we will have our input for public consultation here. So just to keep that in mind. Deputy Mayor McGee, did you have a question?
I do, and I I think it's just that I I, you know, just add to the uh general thoughts is that when I think of noise bylaws, do we have any tools um to uh to actually hear noise and and those kinds of things? And is that, so that question, um, and um, okay, and then go ahead, answer that, Cody, and then.
Absolutely. So um, when it comes to noise, it's it's quite tricky when it comes to enforcement. Uh, we don't have any tools such as a noise reader. Um, and I'm, I wouldn't recommend we proceed with that. Um, anytime we get a tool such as a noise reader, now we need to start looking at uh making sure that it's tested, it's calibrated, what are the costs that are going to be involved in all that? Do we have proper training? Um, there's whole metrics that come involved on how far away you need to be. So when we get to noise, it's, it is hard to enforce in lots of instances as it is very subjective. A noise that's loud to me may not be loud to someone else. So the the thing that I I push for when I do my enforcement and what I push with my colleagues is before we do any enforcement, let's try and put ourselves in the shoes of a reasonable person. So I always use the analogy, if I'm sitting in front of all members of council, am I going to get the majority of council agreeing with whether or not this is too noisy or not? If I think the majority is going to agree, then that's when I'm going to proceed with, yeah, hundred percent. In my opinion, this is too noisy, you need to turn down your music or whatever. If I think only one member of council would think it's it's too loud, maybe it's not actually an unreasonable noise. So it is a very subjective thing when it gets to noise. It's very hard. Um, we don't have, um, we're not proposing that we put in decimal reading numbers in there. Um, yeah.
Okay, so and I I think that that that's the answer. So what if we go into now into the communication to the public? Um, there there are things like definition of public lands. What does that mean to us, right? And then and and noise and junk vehicles. What is a junk vehicle compared? What do you mean, just because the motor is not junk, you know, you're going to have all of those arguments and all of the enforcement issues? So we want to be very clear, I think, what we're trying to find out. Uh, and and then at the end of it all, um, enforcement of those tools is, it will be the trick is to say, mm, and and I think this council is really saying, we probably have to step it up a bit. Thanks.
Counselor Ballas?
Yeah, huh, just going back to the extended hour of noise by law to 11. I I'm just wondering if, can that be zoned, for example, because we're getting a lot of senior areas. 11 o'clock for some seniors is pretty late.
You you weren't for the proclamations. Now you're really pushing them.
But can, like, you know, where seasons is in certain areas, can they be zoned for a different timeline?
There there's definitely the option to start breaking out, um, different um areas, um, different days of the week for different times. There is the ability to do that. Um, the struggle that that starts happening is now trying to communicate that to the public on, well, in this area, you're allowed this noise to list time, but this area you're not. So it does become a bit of a communications nightmare on educating people on when the noise is. Um, quite frankly, I've only been here three months, but I've talked to about 20 people about noise. Not one of them actually knows what our current noise time is. And it's pretty simple right now. Never mind trying to introduce all these other areas, but definitely that is something we can um explore.
Personally, I still would like to see 10.
Well, I think that we probably all have a a million other questions that in regards to this. I think that um, I know myself have a few, but I think that a lot of them can probably wait till the community engagement. What type of community engagement will you be having? When will you be going out? Like, how is that being done? Just so we know that we can be there with all of our burning questions and our input.
Yes, um, so we are on some short timelines, um, because we are, we're we're essentially in a little bit of holding pattern right now um with dealing with unsightly properties, knowing that we possibly could be going to this new um community standards bylaw. The reason for that is if we start a process under the current community standards bylaw and we switch to this new proposed community standards bylaw, anything that we did uh for the process wise and procedure wise under the old bylaw no longer means anything. So now we have to redo new orders, new inspections, new photos, new notice of entries. So we're kind of in a little bit of a holding pattern right now. So we are proposing to come back to um council, I think June 8th or something like that. Um, so it is going to be short timelines, um, but definitely social media, um, definitely going out um to different locations in the community where we can uh speak with members of the public, where there's going to be um more than two people around kind of thing. So can we go to the seniors' um clubs, for example? Um, is there different community events that we can stop in at? So it is definitely going to be the next couple of weeks, lots of out there, um, trying to get some feedback, some input, stuff like that. Um, and from administration side, I'm suggesting we're probably going to have an open house, but.
Yeah, and I think I'm just asking because I'm just thinking if there is input from council and we're wanting to say, well, you know what? We're concerned about this or maybe we're concerned about that. When will be the best opportunity maybe to get those?
Yeah, so um, I I was just going to add the comment that if if council wanted to consider a more robust engagement because the the scope of what we're talking about here and to ensure that all of council's considerations get properly incorporated, we can certainly modify the timeline. Uh, but as as Cody explained, um, there are some enforcement pieces that are hinging on these changes. So um, we'll want to be conscious of that in terms of time. But I, but I think it it is probably not unreasonable for us to to want to do a public engagement session in person. Uh, and council might want to find some time uh at one of our meetings to do a a concentrated conversation on on the details they want considered, probably in a G M P.
G M P, okay. So maybe even for council to go through, um, to go through this. And if there's things that stick out or things that you want to include or add or questions on, maybe make a list of those. And then like Rob had suggested, maybe we'll do that at our next G M P meeting or prior to, um, I guess would be prior to um the public, the open house, right?
Yeah, I'll I'll work with the enforcement team uh and uh we'll see how we can uh build a schedule together that would include that type of engagement.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. Yeah, because I just see it could go back and forth a a lot today with uh with our input and our ideas. Um, so knowing that we'll have an opportunity to um to possibly um give our feedback and do some changes or amendments to the community bylaw. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion for first reading on this? Deputy Mayor McGee?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Dodds. I would make a motion that we give first read to this uh um community standards bylaw.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Are there any comments, question or debate on the motion? Nope. Okay, then I'll ask the question. All in favor? That is Carrie. Thank you for that. Thank you very much for that. We'll move on to 10.3. Request for decision discretionary permit, development permit, D B twenty-two dash zero one zero at fifty-three oh two thirty-fourth avenue. Mr. White, this is you.
Thank you, worship and council. Administration has received a development permit application for discretionary use to operate a metal salvage and storage facility at fifty-three oh two thirty-fourth avenue. Um, the proposed uh development is is in alignment with what what was uh envisioned for the subject property under the missile development plan, the northeast of five uh area structure plan and the land use bylaw, um, which all encourage heavy industrial use in that area. Um, the unique, uh, one of the unique aspects of this application is that there may be environmental concerns on the uh west side of, there's a creek there. So as part of the development conditions, uh, uh, we have. we have requested that an environmental impact assessment be required to assess the existing conditions, the risks of the, and of the operations and how they were going to mitigate those operations and risks, and then how to monitor. With that, administration recommends council approved development permit, DV 22-010 with the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Deputy Mayor McGee?
EIA, of course, we do a phase one and if they have to go to a phase two, et cetera, et cetera. Do you have a, I guess, a general agreement that they, they know that?
Through Council McGee, yes, I talked to the applicants, so, at least a month ago, and kind of discussed that. And we did forward a, a stage one EIA to them for information.
And, and finally, if you went down there today, all of these pictures that are in my package don't pertain to anything. There's nothing there.
Yes, I believe they've all, yeah, they, they were, the pictures were taken in the winter, yes.
I just raise it because it seems like, oh my good God, we're not getting the permit. I'm, I'm already done my work, but thanks. Anyway.
Council Ballas?
Do we have a future development plan or an idea of what they're, how they're going to restructure that area? Are they putting buildings up? What, what, what are they doing?
They haven't submitted a plan yet. My understanding is that they are working on that and we'll advise them, I guess, in terms of future parking, access, drop-off areas, that sort of thing.
So by approving this, that's not giving carte blanche to do whatever they want to do?
No, they, they have, they have to fit, they have to do all of the conditions that are, and one of those is site improvements and also fire safety plans in addition to the EIA.
Okay, Council Sheriff?
I'm looking at the Drayton Valley and Brezou County Fire Services requirements, and there's quite a list down here. Have they started any of this? Do they have all of them in place? I'm not sure, you know?
I believe they've been approved.
The fuel dispensing, spill control, fire separation, fire protection? Because we know we've had issues with that area in the past. Just wanted to know if they're up to speed on at least most of it.
Thanks for the question, counselor. We have been working with them extensively to make sure that they have a, a plan that will work for the fire department as well as the public moving forward. We are looking at things like tire storage, things like that, that will come up when they are dismantling vehicles and whatnot. So we are providing a lot of advice and guidance on that for them. So, and they have been really good in, in receiving that advice and, and building that into their plans. So we are moving forward in a much more positive light.
Council Comanna, did you have a question? Okay, okay. Yeah, and I think that my understanding is that through the demolition process that for some reason that there's a risk of fire. Is that why? Is through the demolition? But now, once that demolition is done and they're in the development, then the risk isn't as high? Is that correct? Or how does that work? Because you could maybe just explain that to us.
Sure. In this type of operation, there, there's always risks of fire because they're dealing with rubber tires. They're also dealing with liquids, like fuels and stuff like that that are coming off the different things that they're dismantling. So there's, there's always that, that risk. So our job is to minimize that risk by making sure that they have the proper safety procedures and protocols in place to, to eliminate those.
Okay, thank you. Who was it from council that went to actually visit the Metal Neck site in the Camrose? Is you, Tom? Okay, yeah. So this is their second location, just for some of the other counselors. This is their second location here in Drayton Valley. They've been in business in Camrose for quite a few years. I don't know exactly, but this was their second location. So you can always, I guess if you have a little bit of other questions or information, you can always go online and kind of Google what's happening there and how, how they go about in their community as well. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor McGee?
Mayor Dodds, I'll make a motion that council approved development permit, DV 22-010 with conditions.
Perfect, thank you very much. Are there any questions, comment or debate on the motion? No? Okay, then I will ask, there, there is a motion on the table that council approved development permit, DV 22-01 as presented. All in favor? That is carried, thank you very much. We are moving on to 10.4, Treaty Six Land Acknowledgement. Mr. Osmond?
Thank you very much. Before you, is a proposal for council to adopt a land acknowledgement, the wording of this acknowledgement was developed with the assistance of Elder Linda and Elder Alice when we did our indigenous awareness training with them earlier this month. The intention will be once adopted, it will be used at all formal meetings of the municipality and be read out to acknowledge the lands prior to us starting the business of the day.
Perfect, thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for Mr. Osman? Council Ballas?
You say that it will be used at all formal? Or is that a discretionary thing that can be up to the person that's chairing the meetings?
So the intention here would be that council adopt it for use at all formal meetings.
Any other questions? I just have a comment. We were very fortunate to spend the day with both Linda and Alice here a couple of weeks ago. It was a very, I think, enjoyable day and just a day of learning and sharing. And yeah, just a really nice day. So I really appreciate that they were able to help us with this acknowledgement. One of the questions that I might have asked you this before, Rob, was the Inuit in Alberta. Is that something that when both Linda and Alice looked at, that they thought that was appropriate?
Yeah, so in building this, in addition to their assistance, we use templates from a number of different municipalities. The, the intention here is acknowledging that the traditional territories of the First Nations, Métis and Inuit in Alberta, and this area is one part of that. So it just, it speaks to those three populations using the, having the traditional territories in Alberta, not necessarily that there were Inuit people here in the Drayton Valley region.
Okay, and then they thought that this was, this was good when they reviewed it?
Yes, and it, and it's quite common wording. We've looked at a number of municipalities and a lot, number of other government organizations. And although everybody has slightly different wording, this type of terminology is very common.
Perfect, thank you very much. Any other questions? Is there a member of council that would like to? Are we looking for a motion? Here?
We are looking for a, a motion to, for council to adopt the land acknowledgement for our formal meetings and gatherings.
Okay, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion for the adoption of this? Council Ballas?
So just for clarification, that makes it mandatory then that all future meetings, this is going to be an acknowledgement prior to the beginning of a meeting?
That, that is the, the process that's proposed here and universally common use of a land acknowledgement statement, that before an organization begins its formal business in a meeting, that it's read out acknowledging the, the lands.
Not against the wording. I have some questions about whether it needs to be mandatory, whether we're pushing it and saying you've got no choice. And I don't like basically not being able to have a choice.
And that's, I think, why we can put a motion on the table and you can either vote for it or against it.
But I can also have a discussion. That's still my right, unless it's mandatory that I can't. I'm totally accept the acknowledgement. I'm not totally convinced that it needs to be mandatory. Just my position.
Mr. Osman, did you have anything to add?
I, I can certainly provide the comment that I'm not sure that the mandatoriness of it is correct. It would be used at all of our, our meetings and gatherings because by adopting it, council is saying that, yes, this is the, a central acknowledgement of the municipality. So that's why it would be used and it's not left to the, the individual chairing the meeting to make that decision. So I, I understand what you're saying. It would be used at all of them and, but it's because by adopting it, council is saying, yes, it's our intention that this statement be made.
Deputy Mayor McGee?
I, I don't know if this is what you're thinking about, but if the physician recruitment meeting is called on next Friday, are you opening with this? And, and you might be opening in with it, but only if you remember. And economic development board meetings, it should open with that. But only if you remember, only if you've set an agenda. That's the way I, I, I see it happening. So mandatory is it in our, you know, our GMPs, our council? But I'm not sure if it goes further. If it goes further, fine. If you remember.
So it would be used across the organization? So if we were to do a public engagement on the community standards bylaw that Cody just presented, we would open with this statement. However, an organization that, if we picked an organization that has an association with the town, like perhaps the Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee, they, they have their own terms of reference. They aren't, they aren't part of the organization, although they're associated with council. So it would be for their organization to make that decision. So we won't impose this outside of the organization. But the, I think the expectation would be inside the organization of the town of Drayton Valley, we would use it.
Council Comanna?
Thank you. In my opinion, I, I fully support the, the wording and, and support that we will adopt it. You know, whether it's mandatory or not, that's a discussion I think we need to have. But having said that, I'm concerned that, you know, we are doing this, but we are not doing the prayers and the, the other things that we used to do before we start of a council meeting. And I, from my opinion, I cannot differentiate the two. Right? So how, how can we do one and not the other? So it, it seems like a double standard to me. But other than that, I'm in fully support of, of doing this. But in my mind, if we're doing this, we should do the other two as well.
Any other questions? Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? I'm going to need a motion.
Mayor Dodds, I'll make a motion that council adopts a land acknowledgement that states, we acknowledge that we are gathered on Treaty Six lands as part of the traditional territories, territories of the many First Nations, the Métis and Inuit in Alberta. The town of Drayton Valley is grateful for the knowledge keepers and elders and the stories and teachings that they share of these lands and its people, and that this land acknowledgement be utilized before any regular council meeting, governance priorities meetings and other formal meetings and gatherings hosted by the town of Drayton Valley.
Thank you very much for that. Is there any comment, question or debate on the motion? Just, just to make a note that in the motion that Deputy Mayor McGee had made, it doesn't say mandated. It says that this land acknowledgement to be utilized. And then it states at exactly what Rob had said about our town gatherings, meetings, things like that. So I think that, you know, the word utilized is a little different than mandated. So I'll ask, remember there was a motion on the table? All in favor? All opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much for that. We will move on to 10.5, customer service management software. Again, this is you, Mr. Osman.
Thank you very much. Before you, I have a request for council to approve the purchase of a municipal software specifically designed for citizen request management issue tracking. It's in a category of software dedicated to customer service management. We have had a number of conversations over the past few months about our interest in, in approving our responses, particularly with the public. This type of software, in addition to assisting us to keep track of all those responses, additionally keeps track of statistics and event management, or incident management. So for example, if I had somebody call in and say, you know, I, I placed a call to Public Works four times and I don't have a response, using the software, I'd be able to look up and find those engagements and then locate where in the organization that particular individual is, is finding difficulty connecting for resolution on their issue. The software itself requires approximately $10,000 to be purchased and implemented in 2022. The reason it's in front of council today is in addition to that cost, which we believe we can fund through operations, it does require an annual maintenance. Those costs, we estimate to be approximately $8,000. So it's an ongoing budget commitment. So I am looking today for a motion from council for authorization to proceed with the project and acknowledge that the amount of $8,000 for ongoing licensing costs be included in budget going forward.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Council Sheriffs?
I just have a question because, I mean, $8,000 a year commitment plus $10,000 for the service itself. Has there been a high demand in that area for communication with the town?
So we, right now, we still field all of the customer input. So whether somebody's calling to arrange, to get a permit for a parade or whether somebody's calling about a pothole or asking about a program, we still take all of those calls. One of the things that we want to take a close look at is our community ser, or customer service to our residents, making sure that when those requests are coming in, they're getting to the right person, we're getting them the right answer, and we're acting as quick as we can. So the software enables us to do that with a little bit more clarity. There'll be several forms of input. The software allows somebody to reach out by phone, email or through a web portal to, to put their information in. So there's more options available to them and then we can track it better. And the system can actually be trained. So if, if you went to the portal and put in a pothole request, the system doesn't require anybody's assistance to forward that through to Public Works and create a work order for the, the pothole crew. So that automated process will also help reduce those times between when we receive a request for service and when the service occurs.
No, I think it's a wonderful idea. It's good.
Council Ballas?
I thought we had a system similar to that for Public Works and doing work orders now, did we not?
So through the citywide system, which is our asset management software, there is a work order system. But what it doesn't do is it doesn't, it doesn't bridge the gap between the customers' contact with the municipality and the creation of the work order. So the software that we're currently looking at has the ability to connect- So the software that we're currently looking at has the ability to connect from their portal straight through to the asset management software to create the work order.
So that still would have to be inputted by a certain person?
With this software, you won't have to do that. The system can actually take a request and move it through to a work order without the additional step of stopping at somebody's desk to manually create a work order.
So if I call in and I have a concern, it automatically goes into this system from the telephone or?
Yeah, it can go in from the telephone, email, or through the web portal. And then depending on the request, if it's simply a pothole report, you can actually, you can mark them on the map. They can go into Public Works. And if it's appropriate, we can create a work order.
Counselor Comanna?
Thank you. The course and all that, you know, our software like this, I think it's valid. My question is, though, has this been implemented in another municipality? When you mentioned that, I know, community can call in, and I'm assuming there's a translator and how accurate that translator would be, right? The second question would be, and you mentioned about citywide, and we will have this as well. How does the two bridge together?
Yeah. So the first question is probably our closest neighbor, Brazu County, implemented this, the same software solution that we're looking at just a couple of years ago. We had apparently started considering it about the same time, but they were able to get through the process a bit ahead of us. It's widely, systems like this are widely used in municipalities just because of the sheer volume of public input into the organization. The second question, sorry?
The citywide software and the software, how, you know, how do we?
Yeah. So the software that we're looking at here is really the customer management side, where the citywide software is an asset management side. So the asset management side has all the tools we need to track the assets, the work orders, those types of things. But it doesn't provide us with the customer management tools. So one of the things that I'll be able to do with this is it will create, for example, if, I'm gonna use myself, if I received five customer inputs in a week, at the end of the week, I'd be able to generate a report that would show me how many customer calls I dealt with, how long it took me to resolve on average a customer call, and anything outstanding so that it can be addressed by senior leadership. So that customer component isn't addressed inside the asset management software.
Right. I'm sorry. So that means that somebody need to get that report and then input that to the citywide manually? Is that how it's?
There's actually a computer connection between the two softwares so that the information can flow both from the customer management software into citywide, but also when a work order that was created through the customer service module is completed, that work order completion can flow back into the customer service. We'll have two-way communication between the two.
I can make a motion.
Okay, sure. That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you have a question? Oh, go ahead. Counselor Evans?
So this particular software, if we have someone, a resident that says, you know, I phoned 20 times and haven't got a response, will this be able to track that individual? You know, even if they've kind of been sent to a different place?
Yes. In fact, in other municipalities, particularly if you've had a complex and sensitive conversation with a member of the public that took a lot of effort and was difficult to resolve, you do get that customer-based reporting. So I'm able to, if you were to call up Counselor Evans, I'd be able to see what types of calls we had in the past, what's outstanding. So if you get escalated to my desk and you tell me that, yeah, I've got a bunch of issues outstanding, I can see them right on the screen when I pull up your customer profile to say, okay, I see these three items, and one of them appears pretty old, so let's get into this.
So it'll track the history then?
Yeah.
And does it give a person an option to opt out of the automated system if they want to actually talk to a real person?
So you, the best automation comes when we can get the biggest bulk to come through the automated means. However, if somebody does call up somebody at the front counter and say, I have this issue, we can manually input that call into the system. So we don't lose it.
Counselor Comanna, did you want to make a motion?
Sure, thank you. I'd like to make motion that council approves purchase of municipal software specifically designed for citizen request management and citizen issues tracking at project cost of $10,000 funded from operations. Further, that administration be directed to include the ongoing licensing cost of the software in future operating budgets. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for the motion. Is there any question, comment, or debate on the motion? Just to comment, yeah, I think this is a great system, you know, to be incorporating. The price is a little bit, the $8,000, you know, a year is a little bit concerning. I'm sure that we've shopped around or that's the best that it gets, considering it's being used in other municipalities, and it's not the first time it's being used. So, yeah, no, I'm just excited. Sounds great. Deputy Mayor McGee?
Just to follow up, I'm gonna guess we're gonna see a real spike in our customer service, and then we're gonna hear it from the public on an everyday basis.
That's certainly what I anticipate from the program. So it gives us a bunch of additional tools to manage those customer service points. It also gives us the tools we need to provide that mentorship and guidance with staff so that we can improve customer service across the board. That's the purpose.
Counselor Ballas?
Automated systems. The other day, I had an issue with my mobile banking, so I was on hold for two and a half hours the first day, three hours the next day. Is this something that we can expect to happen, or how does that work?
I don't imagine that you would have any of that type. So the portal itself essentially is a web-based form, so you'd go in and put your name and some other information. If you chose not to include that information in your feedback, obviously, we wouldn't be able to reach back to you and let you know when we've done what you were looking for. But it's not an account-based system where you have to sign up and you'd have a password. It's really, you can just go to the form and type in the information, send it in, and that's it. The rest is on our side.
Just wanna, is there, Rob, a possibility for a trial period to see if this is something that our community will accept and be happy with?
I'm not aware of that option, but we can certainly ask if something like that is available. If it is, I can certainly see doing it. We'd likely still be responsible for all of the implementation costs, but we wouldn't be locked, we won't be locked into a contract at any rate. So if we decide in a year's time that the system isn't doing what we need, then we can have a look at it then.
Is this a long-term contract or is it go year by year?
It's essentially year by year.
Perfect. There is a motion on the table, and I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Moving on to 10.6, New Aquatic Cemetery Amenity Sponsorship Right Agreement for Approval. Mr. Von Klav, for then. Did I say it right?
Thank you, Men and Chair, and to the rest of council. So in front of you, you have the approval request for council to approve two additional sponsorship agreements with two businesses that will support the build and the, let's say, the start of our new Ricochet Oil Corp aquatic center. So those two businesses are Apex Distributions. That's an agreement for sponsoring our bleacher, so giving the name to that location. And the other one is from Spartan Delta Corp, and they will sponsor basically our free Wi-Fi in the building. So with that, I can take questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? No, doesn't look like there's any questions. Yeah, this is very exciting to see all the sponsors be coming in to support our aquatic facility. Very thankful for the generosity and the donations that come into the community, as well as the subcommittee that makes this all happen. So very glad to see. So if there's no questions, then for administration, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion? Counselor Sheriffs?
I'd like to make a motion that council approved the sponsorship rights agreement between town and Apex Distribution, Inc., as presented, and that the council approved the sponsorship rights agreement between the town and Spartan Delta Corp., as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions, comments, or debate? Deputy Mayor McGee?
Just one question. External funding in the form of grants, donations, and sponsorships are still necessary as the goal for community sponsorship is 3.8 million. Do we have a tally on where we're at? We now have this funding coming in, et cetera, et cetera. So I'd just be interested to know, you know, the thermometer, where are we at?
Thank you, Counselor McGee, and for that question, and to the rest of council. So, yes, it's an interesting thing to make that thermometer. Right now, we are looking into how to give that knowledge to the community and to make sure that we show how far we are. So it's interesting to do that, and we're looking in a way to make that more known. Thank you.
Yep.
Great idea, yeah. Perfect. Thank you for that. So there's a motion on the table. I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Always great news.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I guess you're still here. We're moving on to 10.7, Drayton Valley Municipal Library Memorandum of Understanding. This is you as well.
Thank you, Chair, and to the rest of council. So in front of you, you have the memorandum of understanding for the library services that we have an agreement utilizing our facility and providing the services of library to our community and the surrounding area. So last time, we discussed, of course, in council, the opportunity to make amendments. They were not made. The only change that you see in the proposed memorandum of understanding is the incorporation of the basically standard items of the inclusion of us as an additional insured and the old harmless section because the library, of course, operates on town facility. So with that, I can give it to you for discussion or questions.
Thank you very much again for that. So are there any questions for administration on this? We have discussed this. Oh, Deputy Mayor McGee, have a question?
One quick one. I might have heard from someone that in the MOU, and I've gone through it again, that in the MOU, it was stated somewhere that if the library runs a deficit, the two municipalities will pick the deficit up. And I don't think I can argue with that, but where, how do we have the control over that? Is it a yearly control or it's, and I don't see it in the MOU, but?
Thank you for that question, Counselor McGee, and to Chair, to the rest of council. So the only financial allocation, of course, is made when budget is set by the two municipalities for the allocation to the library or operations. So with that, they have to stay within the allocation, the funding that town council provides. If they would go over budget, of course, it will come back to council for decision what has to be done with that. But the allocation is the only moment that's made in the budget for their provision, and they have to stay within their operational budget allowance.
That's the way I understood it. And so I was taken back when I heard that comment, and I thought, well, we have that opportunity to say, here's your square and stay in it. If you fall off the square, to what degree, I don't know. I've never seen it, so.
Yes, I've had some.
Yeah, I would just add to that. I have seen examples in other communities where, for various reasons, we've seen a deficit in the library. And often, the municipal partners will hear the library board out on how to reach a funding understanding. But there'd be nothing in the library act that would mandate that to be split between the partners. So the allocation approved by council is the allocation approved, and we need to stay within that in circumstances where they experience a deficit. I think it would not be unexpected to see the board come back to the municipalities looking for some help. But there is nothing chaining council to any particular resolution of that type of problem.
Any other questions? Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Counselor Evans, thank you.
I'll make the motion that council approved the Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board Memorandum of Understanding 2022, as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Any comments, question, or debate on the motion? Here's a motion that council approved the Drayton Valley Municipal Library Board Memorandum of Understanding 2022, as presented, and I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to 10.8, Appointment of Prohibited Noxious and Noxious Weed Inspectors for the 2022 Season. Mr. Alnick, this is you. Seems like we just did this.
Thank you, Your Worship. So it's come to that time of the year that we have to appoint some weed inspectors. Under Section 7.1 and 9 of the Alberta Weed Control Act, a local authority shall appoint inspectors to enforce and monitor compliance with this act within the municipality. So if council current member, or at least members of previous council, we've always entered into an agreement with the county just for cost sharing, and also they're kind of the experts of having a department or a division of this. So essentially, the terms and the pricing and everything is the same, and the county finally notified us on who their appointed weed inspectors are. So it's just simply coming to council for a decision. And upon approval, if that's the way council wishes, we will sign the agreement that we have drafted between us and the county. Is there any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you. Are there any questions for administration? Deputy Mayor McGee, yes?
I'll make a motion, but with the proviso of one question after I make the motion.
Sure.
That council appoint the following individuals as weed inspectors for the town of Drayton Valley for the 2022 season. Aaron McAdam, Amber Kynock, and Rihanna Ressler as weed inspectors, all from the Brazu County. And the question I have is that we have, I know that there's a large field to the west of the Debee Forest. And last year, we really had a ton of noxious in there. And so I'm trying to get in my mind, as the inspectors, they'll move around town of Drayton Valley, and they'll say, we gotta deal with this, right? Who has to deal with it?
So when we get the reports from the county, from these weed inspectors, if council decides this way, if any private landowners, the county will disperse to them. And any of our lands, I'll get the reports for us to action with either our team or certified people if it needs a bit of application.
Right. So, and we have budget for them?
Yes. It's part of operating.
Wonderful. Kate, there is a motion on the table. Are there any comments, question, or debate on the motion? Sure. Counselor Evans?
So if we turn it over to the landowner that you're required to take care of these noxious weeds, is there anything standing in the way of them getting the proper chemicals, if you will, or whatever? Like, we don't have a bylaw in place saying you can't use a particular chemical, and we're telling them, but you need to get rid of the weeds? I'm just, there's no?
That's correct, Counselor Evans, is there's no restriction on what chemicals they can use. It's just essentially enforcing that they do take care of it.
Okay, thanks.
Kate, perfect. So there is a motion on the table, and we lost Bill. Do I need to have him back before I make the call to motion?
No.
No?
No, you don't have to.
Okay. Then I'll ask the question. All in favor? That is carried. I wasn't sure if the motion was made while he was here, so I thought, wasn't sure if he had to vote on it or not. We're good? Okay. You gotta go, I guess, right? Kate, we'll move on to 10.9, Board Member Appointments to the Assessment Review Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, it's a time of year again to appoint these members to the Assessment Review Board. So Town of Drayton Valley Assessment Review Board Bylaw 201002B and the subsequent amending bylaw 201311. So, Town of Drayton Valley Assessment Review Board Bylaw 201002B and the subsequent amending bylaw 201311B establish local assessment review board and composite assessment review boards as per Part 11 of the MGA. Sections 454-1 and 454-2 of the MGA require the council appoint at least three members, or persons as members, to each local assessment review board, and appoint at least two persons as members to each composite review, assessment review board. Additionally, the MGA requires the council prescribe the term of the office of each member appointed and prescribe the remuneration and expenses payable to each member appointed, and designate one of the members appointed as the chair of the LARB and CARB. In order for appointments to occur, the members must have board member certification through the Land and Property Rights Tribunal.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Thompson? No, doesn't seem like there's a lot of questions. Everybody knows what they're supposed to do. Then I'll ask a member of council if they would like to make a motion, please. Counselor Clark?
I'll move that council appoints Ms. Monica Sheriffs, Ms. Christina Gallivan, and Ms. Jaclyn Biolo as board members to the local assessment review boards and composite assessment review boards for the 2022 year, expiring on December 31, 2022. And that council designates Ms. Christina Gallivan as the chair of both the local assessment review boards and composite assessment review boards.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that. Is there any question, comment, or debate on the motion? I guess my question is just, did you and Monica flip for this, or how did it work? How did you decide? Oh, Sabina did. Nice. Okay, there is a motion on the table. So, I think, did I ask if there was any question, comment, or debate on the motion? Can't remember if I did. I did. Okay. So, the motion is there, and I will call all in favor. That is carried. Amelia, you had your hand up, right? Okay, perfect. So, that is carried.
Thank you.
Move on to the next one.
So, the Town of Drayton Valley Assessment Review Board Bylaw and the subsequent amending bylaw establish a local assessment review board and composite assessment review board as per Part 11 of the MGA, and it requires that council appoint a designated officer to act as the clerk of the assessment review boards, having jurisdiction in the municipality and prescribe the remuneration and duties of that person, and that ensures that the clerk is not the assessor. For appointments to occur, the appointees must have valid training through Municipal Affairs. Administration is recommending the appointment of Ms. Leah Sadegian, Finance Manager, as the Assessment Review Board Clerk. Ms. Sadegian's certification is effective until 2024.
Great. Thank you for that. Are there any questions for administration? No questions. Is there a member of council that would like to make the motion, please? Counselor Sheriffs?
I'll make the motion that the council appoint Ms. Leah Sadegian, sorry if I mispronounced it, as Assessment Review Board Clerk to the Assessment Review Board for the one-year term expiring June 9, 2023.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, or debate on the motion? Deputy Mayor McGee?
One question. Ms. Sadegian, is she an employee of ours, or do we just bring her in on contract whenever we have the...
She's my finance manager. So, she's an employee here.
Just not catching the last name. That's okay.
Sadegian. Ms. Leah Sadegian.
You say it so well.
Yeah.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Perfect. Okay, the motion on the table is that council appoint Ms. Leah Sadegian as the Assessment Review Board Clerk to the Assessment Review Board for a one-year term, expiring on June 9, 2023, and I will ask all in favor. That is carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for that. I'm just wondering, 10.2, are Gerald and Susan here? No? Okay, they're not. We're, we have guests for lunch today, so maybe we will just go through 10.11, and then we will break for lunch. So, come on down, Mr. White, please. I feel like I'm, like, the price is right. Come on down. We need music. Cue the music, Nathan.
Yes. Well, the Communities in Bloom Initiative was discussed at the recent Economic Development Committee meeting, and it was noted that the Town of Drayton Valley has a significant history of participation and success with this program. Community beautification certainly contributes to Drayton Valley's vibrancy and making it a place where people want to work, play, and live, and promotes community pride and makes Drayton Valley an attractive place for both residents and visitors. Basically, the initiative in Drayton Valley just needs to be mobilized with people and resources to be successful. So, the recommendation that came forward was that council direct administration to undertake the work to identify a Communities in Bloom champion and to establish a Communities in Bloom Committee, and for the committee to identify initiatives and costs for consideration as part of the 2023 budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? Deputy Mayor McGee?
It seems to me that, and I remember us being part of all of this, and then 2014 and 2016, we're in the Five Bloom National finalists. And so, did we decide consciously just to shut the game down, or was it COVID? And if so, when we did all of that, did things just drop? Did we not put in flowers anymore? I'm not sure what we're up to here.
Mr. Olmec, you know anything about those?
I don't know why we did. I think it actually was before, it was the council before our last term. Because I actually sat on Communities in Bloom as a member at large, and I remember going around and doing the judging, and it was fantastic. Because that was the second year that we were very close to winning. And then, all of a sudden, just that council of the time, I'm assuming, must have just decided to dissolve it. Yeah, so I don't really know. Just trying to think who was here. I don't think anybody was really here at that time.
So, to follow it up, though, are we going to see an uptick, then? Does anybody expect that, if we've had a downtick? I don't know.
What was the discussion at the Economic Development Committee?
So, as far as I know, the little bit of history is that I believe there was an organization that who took on the Communities Blooming, and then there was a issue of finding volunteers. That's probably why it died down, right? So, I think the Economic Development Committee, we had a discussion about, let's try to revive it. You know, it was great that we have, for the community to look forward to something, and, you know, they will get behind it hopefully, and create these beautiful gardens and lawns and all that during the summer. And also, it's kind of a competition, right? So, hopefully, there will be committee members who want to take on that as well. And also, again, curb appeal, when people from outside coming here, seeing this beautiful town, hopefully, there'll be few who would like to move here as well, right? So, that's kind of the idea that we were trying to achieve with, hopefully, bringing this back. Colin, if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, and to tie this to economic development, you know, we have a lot of business owners that are part of the Economic Development Committee. You know, and because their position is that, you know, they're trying to attract people to this town, and it's hard to do so. You know, the feedback is, you know, hey, we moved here 10, 12 years ago. The paths were beautiful, and there was, you know, it was nice, and there wasn't garbage everywhere, and now there's garbage everywhere. And there's, you know, the paths are getting a little run down, those sorts of things. So, so that's kind of the perspective they're bringing, I guess, to the economic development side of things. So, that's why it's kind of falling in here.
Finally, will you advertise for the champions? Is that how it works?
I don't believe the committee had decided how they would seek that. I think there will be further discussions on that.
Sorry, Kate, what was that again?
Well, we need a champion. So, are we going to advertise for a champion? I'm not sure how you'd get, I think to Counselor Gavanna's point, that I think there probably was a real duck on volunteers. It takes a lot of work. So, we need to find somebody that actually gets behind it. But I, and I don't know how you'll do that. You'll figure it out.
I think the idea would be to bring it to the council, get the approval of the council, and then we can move that forward.
And then the committee will sort it out itself?
Exactly. Hopefully.
Yeah. So, I appreciate, I think this, for me, this is kind of what the committee is supposed to be doing, is the committee goes back, and there's a lot of resourceful people around the table, and you've brainstormed, and you've come up with, I see there's another idea after this. I think it's fantastic that you've come up with this. You're bringing it back now. I can definitely get behind it because I think that we're wanting to see our community marketed. We're wanting to see it beautiful. We're wanting to see change. And I think that, you know, if we're looking at supporting not only our residents, but the business community, then I think we have to, that's our job to be listening, right, and to try it. It's worked in the past, you know? And we do always comment about, you know, how our flowers looked, about how, you know, we had sponsorships outside of businesses and storefronts. So, maybe that's what we go back to, right, is we go back to the things that were before the recession, before COVID, and try them out again. I don't think we have a whole lot to lose considering what we've lost in the last few years. So, I think this is exciting. So, I think if there's no other question, then I would be looking for a member of council to perhaps make a motion. Counselor Sheriffs, I always, my mother's like, deputy sheriff, honorable today.
Okay, I'll make a motion that council direct administration to undertake the work to identify a Communities in Bloom champion and to establish a Communities in Bloom Committee, and for the committee to identify initiatives and costs for consideration as part of the 2023 budget.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions, comment, or debate on the motion? Counselor Ballas?
One question. Going forward, who's taking the lead on this? Like, to me, almost this should be under sustainability or something else versus economic development. But anyway, you know, it's not that I'm not in favor of it, but...
Let the committee sort it out.
Who takes the lead and goes ahead and organizes it and does the work now?
I think the Economic Development Committee is taking the lead at the moment, and, you know...
Maybe the Economic Development Committee, maybe they'll decide that, well, this is something they want to partner with sustainability. Let's see what happens and see what they come back with and figure it out, maybe.
Yeah, if I can comment. Though, I guess the way I see this going is, so, council says, yes, go ahead and do this. And essentially, the ask is just finding a champion, right? So, committee goes back, and they identify a champion. They come back to council and say, here's who we think can handle this? And council decides, yeah, sure, go ahead. Yeah, I, yeah, I think that's probably up for debate. I think we can...
Yeah, in the motion, it says that the committee will identify the initiatives and costs for that. So, maybe it's through fundraising or businesses, right? I don't think that it's, it's not been asked of the town yet. Mr. Osman?
Yeah, so, if we just take a look at the recommendation or the motion being made, what it's, what it's asking for is administration to undertake the work to identify a champion found the committee. Once the committee is created, they will do the work of deciding kind of what projects will be proposed to council. I suspect that there might be some costs in advertising to find members, that type of thing, but the cost of actually creating the committee to be minimal. I suspect the $5,000 has more to do with implementation costs of the Community in Bloom program. There's application fees and other things that have to be done to run that program.
There is a motion on the table that council direct administration to undertake the work to identify a Communities in Bloom champion and to establish a Communities in Bloom Committee, and for the committee to identify initiatives and costs for consideration as part of the 2023 budget. So, with that motion, I will ask all in favor. That is carried. And what I think we'll do is we will break for lunch right now. I'm hearing some noise out there, so I'm thinking that our guests might be here, so at 12 o'clock. And so, when we reconvene, we'll come back, and we have one more item left on decision. Do we want to jump into that item and then go into closed, or how do we want to kind of do that? Just get rid of the 10.12, and then, I'm just thinking for administration to all come back. What do you think's the easiest?
If I could suggest, it might be easiest to just complete the in-camera session immediately following lunch, then bring the staff in.
And then bring the staff in. Okay, so then lunch, or so staff doesn't come right back. Okay, drive safe. Bye. Okay, and then, so then, for anybody that is online, we will be going into a closed session immediately after lunch, just so you know. We'll reconvene at 1 o'clock. At 2:03, and we are jumping back into our agenda items. We are going to be, what are we in? We're not in a delegation. We are in our, where are these called here? Decision items. Decision items, 10.12. Economic Development YAC Committee Recommendation, the Community Cleanup Program. Mr. White? This was, I'm assuming, an additional request from, out of the committee?
Yes, Your Worship and Council. There's another discussion on the Community Cleanup Program. Basically, this is an initiative that seeks to mesh with the community and the businesses and develop a behavior of cleanliness and niceness in the community. So, it's facilitated, this program would be facilitated through the Municipal Services Department, and locations have been identified to focus on the cleanup activities. Or participants could choose their own businesses and areas to clean up. The town would be providing garbage bags and gloves to facilitate these activities and look after disposing of the garbage at the landfill. There would be minimal impacts to the budget and the organization, but the benefits could be significant. The recommendation is that council direct administration to implement the Community Cleanup Program as presented. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any questions for administration? I think I have just a couple of questions. I guess this, again, is a recommendation coming out of the committee. So, who would kind of be in charge of running the cleanup program? Would that, would that be on the committee, or are they looking at outsourcing that, or what was kind of the intention?
Yeah, I guess I don't have an answer for that. I think what the thought was, this sort of came out of the Communities in Bloom thing in the comments about, you know, pathways, you know, garbage and all that sort of stuff, and parks. You know, the thought, there was some conversation about, you know, how this would be funded, and part of it was through potentially businesses coming and coming to the table and saying, look, we'll, we'll give a, you know, $1,000 or something to a community group to go and take care of, you know, let's say, the pump track or the parking lot, or those sorts of things. But I mean, there wasn't, I guess, a whole ton of discussion around how it would actually be administered yet. It's just a kind of an idea. So, the thought is, is this, does this sound feasible to council? And if so, you know, we can look forward to, you know, just deciding how this would be administered and all those sorts of things, so...
Yeah, I think, oh, sorry, go ahead, Rob.
So, if I understand, I think what administration's proposing here is that if approved to move ahead with this project, that it could be administered through administration. So, specifically, the Municipal Service Department, communications would likely be accessed to set up the advertising for the program. And then, when people were interested, they could contact administration. We'd schedule them into a location, provide them with bags and whatnot, so they can do the program. So, I think in terms of affecting this program, it would be internal in our, from our perspective.
I just wonder, and I don't know if Hans would have the history, because I know this was Lola. I know that there was a program, there was something that we ran through community services, because I remember my kids did it one year, and they went, and we went down to the Rotary House, and they picked up gloves and garbage bags, and they got a little Tim's card or a Dairy Queen card, and a chocolate bar to go out and pick garbage for the day in the community. And I'm just trying to think, what was that, or how was that?
Would it have been in the month of April, do you think?
I don't remember. Owen? Maybe. Is that what it was? Oh, so is that something that runs on an annual operation clean sweep? Okay. Pretty much the same thing as what I'm, yeah, as I'm saying, is that if you want it to volunteer, then that would be, yeah, okay. And I mean, for me, I don't see anything wrong with it. I think if somebody, you know, especially if we can get our youth involved, if they want to go and clean up somewhere or do something, and whether we do reward them with a Dairy Queen or a Tim's or a local collective $5, you know, to do something, get out in the community, I think it's great. Questions?
Of course, the only thing that comes to it is the discussion that we've had before, is it liability, et cetera, et cetera. But if, barring all of that, which I think it's a great idea, Colin's view on, you know, somebody saying, okay, I got a thousand... it's a great idea, Colin's view on, you know, somebody saying, okay, I got a thousand bucks on the Boy Scouts, the Cadets, the HTA, hockey groups, and just get, get them guys working away. And that's how you fundraise, rather than selling chocolates, you can get a thousand bucks. Yeah, so it's a great idea. We just need to get it encouraged and out there, right? And then just be careful.
Yeah. So would this be a, like a big workload on, on administration to kind of get this up and going? Or how do you kind of foresee this happening?
Well, I think what we've outlined here, we don't see this program being particularly onerous. We'd have some supplies and we'd use our, our current systems to, to kind of direct people to where they could, could spend those volunteer hours.
So fairly easy.
Coordination.
Okay, okay, perfect. Any other questions? We're starting to lose a few of the counselors. How many of us are left here? Everything is good, Sabina? Okay, we still got forum? Okay, well, then I will be looking for a member of council to make that motion. Deputy Mayor McGee?
Mayor Doughts, I would recommend by motion that council direct administration to implement the community cleanup program as presented.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any comments, question or debate on the motion? None? I will ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very, very much. Okay, we're going to be moving into our department reports, and I'm going to fumble through this a little bit, because I think what we're going to do is Rob and I talked a little bit about, maybe what we'll do is, I'll just go ahead and read the, the planning deport, or reports out. We have them as information. And then what I think I'll do is I'll ask if there's any questions for anybody in particular around the reports. Is that kind of the idea, Rob?
So you're just going to read out the department title, not?
Just the title, yeah. Just do it that way? Okay, yeah, I know, I said report. You're like, whoa, that's not what we were going to do. I'll just read out the title and then, and then I'll ask if there's any questions. So the department reports today, we have 11.1, Planning and Development Department Report, Agenda Item Report, AIR 22-05-0. 11.2, Municipal Services Department Report, Agenda Item Report, AIR. 11.3, Community and Recreation Department Report, Agenda Item Report, AIR 22-046. 11.4, Economic Development Department Report, Agenda Item Report, AIR-22-039. 11.5, Protective and Emergency Services, Tom Thompson. 11.6, Corporate Services and Finance, Elvira Thompson. So I imagine that council has had an opportunity to read through the reports. And are there any questions for any of the department heads? Deputy Mayor McGee, did you have a question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
It's a similar question that you've had before. Phone booth is almost in, pods are close. Are we at the same position we were just last Wednesday?
Okay, I'm just looking back at my agenda here, Rob, and I'm seeing that, and I don't know if it was missed in this, but it says there's another report from Planning and Development. Is that why you were down, Ken? In regards to the L U B amendment?
My part was next.
Okay. I have an extra.
Sorry, which number was that?
I have an extra page slid in here. My, 257, page 257? Did I miss that?
257 is the department report itself.
Oh, it just looks different.
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, it's, the format is, is different, because this one is just pasted into the template where the others are done as attachments.
Okay, gotcha. Sorry. Okay, I was looking at it thinking we missed something. So for Bill and Amila, what I did was I just read the headings for the department reports. You've had an opportunity to look through them. Do you have any questions for any, anybody in regards to the reports today? Just going to try something a little bit different. He was studying the report, getting his questions ready. Getting his questions ready. Okay, going once. Everybody's quickly going through the reports, huh? Tells you who reads the agendas and who doesn't. Just last minute, I'll, I'll give you like 30 seconds. And we already had our report from Rob. We did that in closed, unless you have anything outside of closed that you wanted to add, Rob?
I don't have anything additional. Oh, yes, sorry, we do have, our new Public Works manager was coming in to meet council today, and we were going to do it as part of Owen's report.
Oh, perfect.
But when he arrives, if we can just have a minute to introduce him to council. But otherwise, we can continue with the agenda.
Absolutely. Yep, that sounds wonderful. Counselor Sheriffs, oh, here's a question.
Counselor Sheriffs, if you remember, oh, back maybe in January, maybe even December, we had initiated a, an amendment to address manufactured homes, the visual and the maintenance of manufactured homes to give some control, architectural controls in the bylaw. And so since then, I've been engaging the, the residents and have the sort of circulating proposed amendments. And so I circulated those to council and to the residents on two occasions. And so I'm bringing first reading back to council on June 15th to initiate these architectural control amendments.
Oh, your mic, sorry.
I'm sorry, thank you. When we agreed that there's going to be a certain age for the manufactured home to, in order to be brought to the park?
Yeah, Bozal, originally, we were looking at 10 years, but in discussions with the residents and the owners, it was felt that rather than just pick a, a year arbitrarily, we have a reason for it. And so we went back and, and we discovered that in 2007, there were major changes to the Alberta Building Code in terms of energy and fire requirements. So we thought that might be a good time. And it just happened to be 15 years. So, because we, we do want to restrict older homes for the obvious reasons of added maintenance and asbestos and stuff like that. We want to get that out of the community and start bringing newer product in.
Good. That's all I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? I know this is a little bit confusing. Now I'm regretting that we did it this way, but all the reports, yeah, yeah. So Counselor Ballas?
Apparently, some people did an interview with CBC. And if you read Alberta municipalities and what CBC actually reported, either they got wrong information or they're reporting wrong. So I'd like to give this to you, Nancy, to give to the communications person to read it over. And if there's corrections, that we contact CBC and make those corrections.
All right. Thank you for that.
Because that story is, there's a lot of truth to it, but there's some that I don't think is factual. Yes, there we go again. Try.
We'll have a, we'll have a look at it after. Thank you. Okay. And did you have a question for the reports? No, for any of administration? No, okay. Did you want to add anything, Rob?
Nope, I wouldn't.
Okay, perfect. Okay, maybe we'll do it different next time. So we'll move on to our council reports. Counselor Clark, you were up first.
Okay, got a couple of things. We, Amila, myself and, and Rob had a good meeting with TC Energy yesterday. You know, they did a little presentation for us. They talked about, you know, their spend in the area. And they kind of, how they found that out was they just pulled, you know, addresses from their program, I guess, that had DV in it. So it was a good number, but I think it could be a lot better in terms of their spend in the area. So one of the things they talked about was, was getting people here on their vendor lists. So that's something we can maybe take through the chamber or through the Economic Development Committee, those sorts of things, that we can start talking to businesses about getting on those vendor lists. We talked about some upcoming projects. They're anticipating another 325 people by the middle of June here to continue on with their NGTL expansion program. But we also talked about, you know, how do we involve local people in their projects once again? And, you know, just looking at it from a, you know, keeping the dollars here, as well as kind of the social aspects of that, you know, having, you know, moms and dads at home with their kids instead of out of town, right? So looking at the social aspects of that. So that was a good conversation. Amila might have more to add, I'm not sure. Nancy, did we talk about this before? The baby essentials, we presented that check for the, those folks, a thousand dollar check. We had a little fundraiser, I guess, that we attended and gave it to them. It was really good. Really quickly, their, their budget's, I think, $15,000 a year. They rely on donations. And so this accounts for, you know, a good portion of their, their yearly budget. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Evans is not here. Counselor Sheriffs?
So I attended a meeting with Dretton Valley Hospitality and Tourism and Community, Dretton Valley Community Foundation, and they are still looking for volunteers for a cleanup after our June 24th street festival that's planned. So if anybody knows anybody or has any kids that need a lesson in cleaning, the RISE projects are getting started. The boards around Tim Hortons, they have few organizations that are already, I guess, assigned to each one of them. And I think the reveal is planned for mid-August. Finished ARB training and the exam, and I'm sitting on ARB board as of today. And then looking forward to FCM next week.
Oh, that's already, wow.
Yeah, I know. Next Thursday, yeah.
Thank you very much for that. Coming up quick, Deputy Mayor McGee?
Thank you, Mayor Doughts. I, I think the only thing to, to bring to your attention was I had the opportunity to go down to the water plant on Friday, Friday morning. And I spent some time with the Level 1, going into a Level 2. She handled the, the plant. In my discussions, we were two hours at it. And Mr. Perrin just did a superb job. I think my confidence level's always been high about what's going on with our water systems and who's looking after it and how, how we're sampling. It just, it just went up in, you know, in increments, that full confidence that we are covered. We have, we know that the river is low, but we're, we got that covered too. So all was good in the Water Department. And I, I was really thrilled to be able to participate in that. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Ballas?
Actually, Pat Jeffrey's probably covered 99.9% of my report this morning. However, there's a couple of things I just want to bring up, like the Global Energy Summit that's coming up in Calgary. Colin, and I don't know if you looked at this or not, but I think we should have some representation there. Something to look, consider, to look at. I don't know. Did you get this? The second thing is, is again, on Alberta municipalities, when you're looking, it's this interstate to sell 46 acres for industrial development. And, and again, I, I think I just want to stress that we really got to get on top of this, because people are coming out, they're offering, this is again, in Alberta municipalities, you know, $160,000 per acre developed. So if, if I'm looking at setting up a manufacturing plant, where am I going to look? Somebody that's already got something developed or just raw land? So I know it's an investment. I think they have to spend around $5 million to develop it. But if you, if we're not going to invest in our town, who is? You know, and I think we got, we got to consider and look at coming up with some plan. And I don't know how you guys feel, but maybe we should just, as a council and administration, just sit down and, and just have a half a day or a couple hours and just talk about economic development. Anyway, that's, that's kind of my report. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Counselor Goodman, oh, did you have a question?
So on May 31st, we have the tour of all of our facilities and land buildings and stuff. Maybe after that tour, we can plan a day where we kind of discuss plans or what we can do with all of it?
Yeah, I think we've had a conversation, Rob and I, and, and in regards to setting up a couple hours, maybe with council and economic development and strategizing a bit of where we see the town going and maybe what things that we need to work on. So we can pick a date for sure. Counselor Cavandis, your report, please?
No, thank you. The 11th, I don't know that age, is committee engagement, as well as the Economic Development Seminar with the province. On the 13th, Energy Summit organized by the Brazos County. 14th, golf ball drop was fun, dropping 3,000 golf balls and trying to find who's the winner. It was a fun experience. And there were three winners and all that. So congratulations to, to winners. 16th, had fun on the street sweeping machine. So it was good to know how things are done and, you know, how time consuming and all that. So we have a better understanding. On 24th, as Colin mentioned, the, the meeting with the energy, sorry, TC Energy as well. But on top of that, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I'm concerned with what's happening with our neighbors. So, you know, there has been two shootings within last week. We are, one in Buffalo and one in Texas. There has been 13 individuals died on Buffalo and 18 kids and, and two individuals, three individuals in Buffalo, sorry, in Texas. So in my mind, this shows the, shows the importance of embracing differences, as well as educating and advocating for the diverse and inclusive community. If, if you're not embracing different cultures, this is the end result. So I think we have a responsibility for our community as well to, to work on that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So my report, I did do an interview with CBC, and I haven't quite gone over it as thorough as Bill has. So I'll, I'll scan through it and see what's real and what's fake news, maybe National Enquirer. It was on, in regards to the zero fee and just getting some traction, which is great. I think Maria from the university and Tanny and myself were all part of that interview. I also did another interview with Big West in regards to the zero fee tuition initiative, as well as funding at the aquatic facility. So it's nice that I think after, you know, the last couple of years, that we're finally getting some traction. And, and just now I'm hearing is that, why am I just hearing about it now? And I don't know everybody was hiding under a rock or what, but we tried to get loud. We, we had ads on radio stations and newspapers, other municipalities. You know, I think we did a, a good job of getting it out there. So it, it's good to, to hear that it's, it's getting spread even more and we're getting noticed. So I think that's fantastic. We did indigenous training a couple of weeks ago, which was a fantastic day. I had spoke about it earlier. I encourage everybody, if they have an opportunity, to learn a little bit more and share some stories. I also was, got to be, be part of Public Works Cleanup last week with Maria Nelson. We were able to pick up garbage at the skate park. And yeah, you have no idea, or, or, maybe I won't say what the things that I were picking up, because we're live at the park that day. But I'm hoping we got the handclaws and hand sanitizer and all that. It was good. It was good to kind of get out there and see what our Public Works team always does. Thank you very much for your hard work and commitment, keeping our streets clean and our parks clean and everything that you do. I think a lot of times it goes unnoticed, and we're just very appreciative of that. And it's nice to kind of walk a day in your shoes or walk a couple hours in your shoes and see what it's all about. So thank you for that. And I attended the Energy Summit, which was great, another opportunity to get together with our, our. with our neighbors Brazos County, to see a lot of the businesses out, and just some new technologies that are kind of out there, and just hear from what people are saying and kind of putting out there. And I think it's just good to be engaging and see people face to face again, rather than behind a computer screen. And then I also attended the HW Pickup Presentation in regards to, for history, they kind of walked you through all these different little history plays at the EPEC Center there last week, and it was fantastic, so thank you very much for that invitation. And that is it for my report. So what I think I'll do is, I will let Owen come on down and introduce us to the manager of Public Works. And I apologize, I didn't do it in between the reports. Come on down. That's the music.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would like to introduce to you Bill Campbell. He joined us about four weeks ago. This is his first time in council, so please be gentle, as I gave him quite a long laundry list of things I'd like him to focus on Public Works, customer service being one, road rehab being the other one. So I'm very excited, the amount of achievements and history that Bill has with this neck of the woods, I think will serve the community very well, so I'd just like to let him have a couple of words. Go ahead, Bill.
Do you nervous to this, because this is my first time doing this, but I appreciate meeting you guys, and if you have some questions, I'd...
Well, thank you very much, welcome to the team, we're very excited to have you on board. We'll go easy on you, we do like the big shiny infrastructure and all that, but not when you're asking for a lot of money. We like more the low-hanging fruit, where it comes to flowers and lights, but welcome, welcome on board, and hopefully we'll go easy on you. Are there any questions for Bill, Colin? Go ahead.
So we got two Bill Campbells, hired in the same week, right? Is this Bill or Billy?
Easy question. Deputy Mayor McGee?
I thought you'd done well when you picked out the white shirt, because we knew you had to go home and change before you got in front of us, that's very, a good choice, as being an old shirt salesman. But, so 15 years in Public Works, in and around, in Alberta, coming from Ontario, or tell me a little bit about that?
I worked for the town of Ajax by Toronto years ago, started as a summer student there, cutting all the football fields, working my way up from there, and then I've come out and worked for Brazos County for a short period of time. Of course, when I came out here in the beginning, it was to do with oil patch and learn that. Worked for Tac Construction, five, six thousand home subdivisions down around Toronto, Brenton, all that area there, running various different types of machinery, and then just kept going with this. My last 13 years was spent on services for snow removal and everything around the town. So I covered from here to Thorsby, Whistle, Cynthia, Lodge, Bulling Down, and all that there, so dealing with similar stuff that we're dealing with.
So when we get into any of the intersections that meet the highway, we seem to have that little bit of a, gee, who's who in the zoo, and how do we get that little pump that you get in? We may have some, do a new person at the helm that can handle it?
Yeah, for sure, but I know Will Fosno very well, for the transportation. So we've got some behavior patches, actually, that's going to happen from the BCMI, because that is their reception, it's all the way to your town, as well as down by Sunny Dog there. So they just finished doing their sweeping program, and they've been through lots with some maul hauling, but they're going to, I'll be in touch with my friend, Jerry, he took over, so they'll be, they'll see when, let you guys know when they're going to come back through town, carry on with their maul hauling, and when that paving is going to happen.
Great, great, good. Welcome to the team.
Yes, thank you very much for coming today. Thank you, you too. Okay, so we are through our council reports and department reports. For information items, we have 13.1, FCSS Advisory Board Meeting Minutes, December 6, 2021. FCSS Minutes, December 6, 2021. 13.2, Brazos Foundation Meeting Minutes, March 17, 2022. 13.3, Drayton Valley RCMP Stats, April 2022. Five-year crime stats. Can I get a motion to accept these as information? Councillor Clark, all in favor? And then we will adjourn the meeting at 2:39 PM.